Three. Four. I don't know. I was 68, so.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Thank you. Glad to have you all here today. Thank you. Today is Tuesday, November 19th. It's a big day for us. This is the day that we put our budget together. I want to say thank you all for coming. I'm Sally Bagshaw. I'm chairing this budget committee and I want to acknowledge and say thanks to all my colleagues, Councilmember Juarez, Councilmember Sawant, Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember Gonzalez-Hirbold, and Councilmember Pacheco. Thank you all for being here. So, we have a big day, but first we're going to approve the agenda and then I will explain where we're going today. So, I move to adopt the proposed agenda, and do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So, we now have an agenda ahead of us, but we are going to add anything that those of you would like to add. We're not speaking to the adds, but we will get them on the record as we move forward. So, at this time, I'm going to ask each council member if you have any additions to the agenda, starting with Councilmember Juarez. Do you have any additions that you would like to make to the agenda today?
I do not.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes. I would like to add new CBA SDCI CB1, SDCI 900 B1, CJ 962 A1, SDOT 915 A1, HOME 914 A1, and OED 15 A2 to the agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Brien, do you have any adds?
I do. I would like to add a new CBA SDCI-3-A-1 and CBA SCL-900-A-1 to the agenda.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have any adds?
I have no new adds.
Councilmember Hirbold?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to add new CBA SDCI 901 A1 to the agenda.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Pacheco?
I'd like to add CBA DEAL 10-A-1 and CBA SDCI 2B-1.
Very good. Thank you. Any other adds to the agenda? Any other comments? And then, Council Central staff, do you have anything else that you would like to add now before we move on to approval of the agenda?
Chair Bagshaw, Ali Pinucci, Council Central staff, if you'd like, I could read them back to you in the order that they will be discussed after we discuss the consent package, but we could do that later as well.
Why don't you go ahead and do that now so that we're all solid on what has been added?
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, there were 11 items added to the agenda. They will be discussed after the consent package in alphanumeric order. So, that would be starting with CJ 962 A1, DEAL 10 A1, HOME 914 A1, OED 15 A1, SCL 900 A1, SDCI 2B1, SDCI 3A1, SDCI 6B1, SDCI 900 B1, SDCI 901 A1, and SDOT 915 A1.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Just a real quick point of order on OED. I think the number that Ms. Pinucci read was OED 15 A1, and I have 15 A2.
That is correct. Thank you. It's 15 A2. I just misspoke.
Just wanted to make sure that we're...I was looking at the right version.
Perfect.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, if there's no objection, those items that have been listed by Council Central staff will be added to our agenda. And hearing and seeing no objection, our agenda is now amended and we're going to consider adoption of the agenda as amended. So, those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, vote aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
None opposed? So, the motion carries. The agenda is adopted as amended and the items will be added to the agenda and will be heard after consideration of the consent package. We're going to move to public comment, but before we do, I want to give everyone a little overview of the excitement that you're going to have before you today. We're going to have public comment. There's about 40. Some people signed up. I'm going to ask that each of you keep your comments to a minute apiece so that we can move on to the items of business and have heard from all of you or as many of you as we can get through today. So, our items of business, once we get there, we're going to be considering the consent package, and those are an item of about 182 items, many of which you have already heard, all of which up here we have heard about. And then, we'll look at the consent package and we are going to give ourselves opportunities to remove items. So, colleagues, I'm going to come back to you after public comment. We will have three different opportunities to remove items. You can raise your hand before we go through the consent package. You can raise your hand and identify them during the consent package if there's something that you forgot or afterward. Those all will be read into the record. We will come back to them after the consent package. We will also be considering the added items to the agenda. So, those things we will actually be considering before we get to the removed items. I know that sounds long, but this is our friend Amelia who tells us that this is the way we got to do it. So, we're going to comply with what our master administrator tells us. All right. So, with that, I'm going to move into public comment. We've got 20 minutes on our agenda. Since there are a lot more of you than 20, I am going to ask for my council colleagues' indulgence. We'll probably continue for another 20 minutes. In fact, why don't we just say right now, we'll go to 10:30. That'll give people 45 minutes to talk with us. At 10:30, we will move on to our business. So, if I can ask Peggy Hoats, your first, Pastor Fetzer, your second, David Haynes, third, and if all of you will get prepared to get close to a microphone, then that will reduce the amount of travel time. Go ahead. Hey, Peggy, good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Peggy Hoats. I've been here so many times in the last eight months, I almost think I don't need to give my name anymore. But immediately after your budget meeting last Wednesday, Lehigh and HSD informed Nicholsville-Northlake residents they would be arrested for criminal trespass on December 9th. Lehigh case managers have been hammering that point home since then. It's flat-out immoral to shut down a working tiny house village in the dead of winter in a city where thousands don't even have basic shelter, let alone a tiny house village, and nearly 100 homeless people have died outside or by violence this year. Northlake residents are clear their village isn't closing this year. Please add a proviso preventing the expenditure of money to close Northlake and Georgetown tiny house villages. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Pastor Fetzer? David Haynes, you will be after Pastor Fetzer, and then Alex Finch and Alicia Roberts.
Good morning, council. I'm speaking also about Northlake Tiny House Village. Gift of Grace congregation thinks that it's a wise and compassionate use of resources to keep a functioning tiny house village going, especially one like Northlake, and so that the people who are living there and actively participating in their community aren't cast out on December 9th as Lehigh is threatening to do. Our congregation is eager to sponsor the tiny house village using the religious encampment ordinance, and I've communicated this to Councilperson Bagshaw and Councilperson Hirbold, and they both received it positively. Deputy Mayor Mosley has also shown an interest in it and is meeting with me tomorrow on the subject. So, I'm asking if the council would please bring its influence to bear on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. David Haynes, Alex Finch, Alicia Roberts, Bruce Good.
David Haynes, City Council, we need congestion pricing at the coal train tracks that go underneath the Dravis Street Bridge, and we need congestion pricing under the new pedestrian bridge at I-5. Now, Seattle is financing police to conduct a war on the homeless, criminalizing them while they're going out of their way to exempt drug pushers who created all these junkie thieves who are exempted from jail while expanding corrupt case managers in social welfare specifically for criminals while Seattle can't even offer a shower and a laundry service on weekends for veterans and anybody else. Now, Community Service Officer Michael Cruzon is hired as a propaganda police to falsely reassure the neighborhood that they're perceivably safe. I can't go into all the details, but it's not enough time on this. It's not fair for a budget slam like this.
Alex Finch, Alicia Roberts, and Bruce Good.
Oh, I'm...
Good, Alex.
Okay. I have a letter here from Nicholsville-Northlake. It's...my name is Alex Finch. I'm now the arbitrator there instead of the external affairs. I was swapped over last night at our meeting. So, to whom it may concern, the villagers of Nicholsville-Northlake voted last night at our weekly village meeting to uphold three truths. The village will remain open past December 9th. The village is not refusing to let people move out to what they choose. All deserve permanent affordable housing. Any open houses will be filled as soon as they are available. Somebody needs them but have nothing. Thank you, villagers of Nicholsville-Northlake.
Thank you, Alex. Alicia, Roberts, Bruce, and then Catherine Parker.
Good morning, council members. My name is Alicia Roberts, and I live at Nicholsville-Northlake. We...I wanted to say that we will remain open past December 9th and continue to provide shelter to those in need in the dead of winter. This is less than best practice to kick people out in the freezing cold. Please add a proviso to prevent closing Northlake and Georgetown. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, before you get started, Catherine Parker, and it says Shannon Mayo has been added, Sean Butterfield, and Charity Ranger.
Good morning, council members. I'm a Nickelodeon. On December 9th, I along with other Nickelodeons will be there to show support for Nicholsville-Northlake. I would like to invite you all to come visit, drink some coffee, and have an open discussion about tiny house villages. We can discuss how Seattle can continue to be the leader in the entire nation to end homelessness. Topics of discussion will be new designs for eco-friendly villages, the cost-effectiveness of self-managed villages, and creating a set of standards for hiring professional case managers. I together...excuse me, I'm sorry. We can continue to end this homelessness crisis. Well, please be aware that during this time, Lehigh will be there arresting all of us, stomping their feet, flexing their monopolized muscles. If we ignore them, maybe they'll just go away and allow the people who are committed to end homelessness to do just that. If not, I'm an XL and I prefer my jumpsuit to be pink. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Catherine Parker here? Catherine Parker? Sean Butterfield, Charity Ranger, and Queen Bee?
Good morning, council members.
Hold on just a second before you get going, Catherine. Let's see, we got a whole group. Why don't we have three minutes here on this?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good morning, council members. I'm Shannon Mayo.
And I'm Catherine Parker.
And these are fellow volunteers with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. We are also here today with Dominique Davis with Community Passageways and Youth Consortium. This is our third visit here to visit with you all to advocate for funding for Choose 180 and Community Passageways. Our Seattle volunteers have been contacting your offices, you've probably heard from us, the last four weeks to ask you for support in these life-saving violence intervention and prevention programs. We understand that 100,000 in funding for Choose 180 seems secure. We're grateful for this and strongly advocate that it remains in the final budget.
We're pleased the latest budget draft includes an additional 300,000 for youth diversion, restorative justice, and non-arrest crime reduction safety programs, including Community Passageways Youth Consortium and two others. This is a great development. However, we urge you to increase this funding package in the final development as this is so important and because this funding will be split across a few organizations. Thank you for supporting Choose 180 and Community Passageways. We know these organizations are helping make our city a safer, healthier place and improving opportunities for all our young people. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And thank you, Don, for joining. Thank you. Sean Butterfield, Charity, and Queen Bee?
Hello, my name is Sean Butterfield. First, I'd like to thank the Office of Councilmember Shama Sawant and for everyone who worked on and has consistently shown up to support the People's Budget Movement. Individual renters are powerless to meaningfully negotiate the terms of their access to the physical space in which they will live their lives, raise their families, study for school, rest after work, and gather with friends to build community. The power to dictate those terms unilaterally belongs by and large to big corporate developers and real estate management companies. Justice and fairness require a balance of power, and in the absence of robust protections that ensure people have a decent place to live, and even if we had those, we should empower renters to organize their communities, to collectively bargain with landlords and fight for their own rights. I urge the council to allocate funding to provide renters with the knowledge and tools to effectively advocate for their own needs and priorities, as well as every single item on the People's Budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sean. So, after Charity and Queen Bee, then we will have Melissa. It says Melissa Purcell, and Nate, Jamie Agnes, in that order. Okay. Thank you, Charity, for coming. We very much appreciate you, and I know it can only be that much more difficult to get here. All right, Queen Bee?
Good morning, Seattle City Council members. Thank you for this meeting this morning. I'm Queen Bee King Rios, a member of WILL and a leader of women in black. As of last week, women in black stood for 99 outdoor or violent deaths already in 2019. We are sick and saddened with grief. These are our brothers and sisters. Without shelter, people die. We need a lot more shelter now and not to close any shelter. Please don't close any shelter. The city's plan to close Northlake Village on December 9th is terrible. Please expand tiny house villages and don't let the city shut down Northlake. I'm asking you all and giving you a special invitation, and I already left one of my leaflets at your office, to join us on Saturday, December 21st, at the Tree of Life in Victor Steinberg Park at 4:20 PM, where we stand and hold our silent vigil and walk through Pike's Market and stand one hour at Westlake. And I also like to say a special thank you to the People's Budget Movement for fighting for tiny homes and Councilmember Sawant for helping lead it. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you, Queen Bee. We have Melissa Purcell and Nate, and who is all with you here?
We have...just the two of us are going to be speaking, and we have a group of approximately 20 people, 15.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi. Again, my name's Melissa Purcell. I'm the Northern Business Agent, Friazi Local 488. I stand here once again to make certain that labor unions and our collective knowledge is heard in the reorganization of our Regulatory Office of OFM. We have met with Deputy Mayor Fong about the asks that you will be voting on today and have asked the mayor for her support. Labor has the pulse on the issues our members and crews deal with daily. Labor sets the standards in all industries on safety, training, and communicating labor laws to our members. We need this to be about equity, jobs, growth, and economic opportunity. Labor's voice must be part of this reorganization if this is to be a success. We welcome change and we're ready to work together to support our industries. We want to thank Councilmember Hirbold and Councilmember Sawant for all of your support, and we ask all of you to join us today in support of our industries. Thank you. Nate Omdale, my brother.
Thank you.
You, Melissa?
Good morning.
My name is Nate Omdale. I am the organizer for the Musicians Association of Seattle, Local 76493. I'm also a council-appointed music commissioner, and I'm a Cornish graduate. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my colleagues. As an organizer, I have the opportunity to keep my finger on the pulse of my community. We have been frustrated with the lack of support, and many of the opportunities that have been presented to our workforce are in a predominantly gig economy context. Our ask, including the creation of a film commission, filling of the music commission with both...and both existing in the Office of Economic Development, and then giving the two commissions the responsibility to create the job description for a director that will represent both film and music, will go a long way to preserving the advocacy platform for working artists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all. I have Jamie, who is Tiny House Villages, and I don't know whether you're by yourself, and Agnes Gary, and then Georgetown Village. Hi.
Good morning, council. My name is Agnes Gary. I am a voting taxpayer who would like to share this concern. As a resident of Seattle for the past 13 years, I am sick and tired of being sick and tired. The taxes have increased while services have decreased. I am very appalled at the lack of unity and support for the hard-working people who've built this city, who work in this city, who have families in this city, and who will continue to grow this city. It's time we start taking working people seriously. It's time to start listening and coming together and working for the benefit of the people, not corporations.
I've called a couple of times now Jamie. Is there a Jamie out here?
I'm signed up as number 12 Jamie. That's it. That was actually a mix-up between myself and my friend who I thought wanted to speak. You've seen me around, and I don't normally speak.
And what is your name, please?
You can call me Jamie or whatever you'd like, frankly. I have great admiration for the progressive council members and my progressive friends in this room. I support...I agree with you on most things. I support tiny house villages. I support grassroots organizations. I support alternatives to the failed system known as capitalism. I am disgusted today by the false choice being sold to us between free mass transit, which I absolutely support, and a congestion tax on driving downtown. I believe we need both. Our poor and working-class sisters and brothers around the world are suffering and dying from effects of climate change, such as crop failures, which lead to rising food prices. I know people in this room who would like to more easily be able to afford food, but there are people meanwhile who are dying of starvation, as well as the hungry people in Seattle. There are other effects such as storms, floods, tornadoes, hurricanes, leading to homes lost. I have known people in Seattle who lost their homes to wildfires in California and came up this way homeless.
Jamie, thank you. I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
If you are not serious about climate change, you have lost my vote.
Georgetown Village is next. And after, Imogen Williams, and then Dinah and Lauren. Thank you all for coming.
I just need the one minute.
Okay. Very good. We appreciate that.
Hello, I am Hattie Rhodes, and I was asked to speak on behalf of Georgetown Village, where I live. I wanted to thank the City Council for the continued support of our village. Just this past week, we had two people go into permanent housing. Now, 60 more vulnerable adults have the same opportunities to continue working with the Lehigh case managers they trust. I also want to thank the Georgetown neighborhood for their friendship and guidance. We support doing more tiny house villages. We know that they work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for coming. So, Imogen, are you here? Imogen Williams? Good. Thank you. You're up next. Dinah, then Devin Silvernail and Sean Smith. And may I ask, please, those whose names I've called, please get up and be ready to go to the microphone.
43rd District Legislative Report. State Senator Jamie Peterson, State Representatives Nicole McCree and Frank Chop. The People First Budget. It's clear our revenue system is upside down when low-income families pay more than 17% of their household income in taxes while Washington millionaires and billionaires pay less than 3% of their income in taxes. It's a question of fairness. Working families pay their fair share. We think big oil, big banks, and big tech companies should too. These corporations at the very top of our economy have received state tax incentives and large tax cuts at the federal level. They benefit from an educated workforce, stable communities, diversity, and an excellent quality of life. We don't have enough shelter. We need lots of tiny house villages. It's winter. We have a lot of people sleeping out in doorways. We need lots of tiny house villages. Please vote for the lots of tiny house villages.
Hi. Just before you get started, after Dinah and Lauren, we have Devin Silvernail, Sean Smith, and then Community Passageways. Hi.
Hi, I'm Dina Braccio.
And I'm Lauren Van Warmer.
And we're with the Tenants Union of Washington State. We're here to ask for you to increase funding for tenant education and organizing services. We work with like thousands of tenants every year to explain their rights, to help them organize, to enforce their rights against their landlord, and to, you know, help make their condition better.
Yeah, so we have a hotline that we do this through. We have our walk-in clinic, and we are also meeting with communities in their communities through our workshops. Yesterday alone at the clinic, I met with tenants, mostly who are low-income and people of color. I met with a tenant with disabilities, a tenant who came here as a refugee, a tenant experiencing suicidality and domestic violence. I met with elderly tenants. These tenants all sought support and to glean a better understanding of their rights, the law, and advice on specific issues such as eviction, inhabitable living conditions, retaliation from their landlords, the list goes on. These are tenants from yesterday's clinic alone, but they represent all of the thousands of tenants that the Tenants Union works with all year.
Thank you. And thank you, Dina. Sorry, I had your name wrong. Devin, Sean, Community Passageways, and then Nikita Oliver.
Hi there, my name is Devin Silvernail.
And I'm Jonathan with B Seattle.
Yeah, we're with B Seattle, and we just want to come here today, first off, to say thank you to Councilmember Sawant for being somebody who is true to what she says and who has stood up for and helped and represented tenants on the City Council and been a good ally. I did want to also include the folks here with us. We're here to speak about tenant services and why we need it. So, if you agree with that, can you raise your little thumbs up with us back here just to show you how many people want this? So, Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember Hirbold, we've sat down and we've talked about tenant organizing together. Both of you have told me that you are tenant advocates. Now is your time to be a tenant advocate. Councilmember Pacheco, you're a renter. That's it. Period. Councilmember Juarez, I know that you want to have tenant services in your community. So, all of you, can you please, now is the time to support them. Support Councilmember Sawant's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sean? Sean Smith, then Community Passageways, and then Nikita Oliver. It looks like Nikita, it's your writing, so maybe you're the same person. Please, go ahead, Sean.
Good morning, council. My name is Sean Smith. I am a Nickelodeon. Many of you know me well. 99 deaths since January 1st. Let that sink in for a moment. Last night, 3,000 people slept in our streets without shelter over their head. We're talking about shutting down two tiny house villages in the dead of winter? That's insanity. Please include a proviso to keep Georgetown and Northlake open. It's insane to do otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Dominique Davis from Community Passageways. I wanted to thank you guys, first of all, for giving some support to this restorative justice package that came out of Sawant's office. I'm asking for this package to be fully funded because the work that we're doing and we're trying to build this collaboration needs to be fully funded. trying to build this collaboration needs to be fully funded. We're all doing great work in our community and Creative Justice and ARBAK and Community Passageways have made a, put a collaboration together to grow our work in the city of Seattle and in our community to help more young people stay out of the system. So we need it fully funded so we can hire more people and build our capacity. That's number one. Number two, Community Passageways has partnered with the LEED program, and we're doing LEED diversion now, and we're doing that in the Burian area and the Seattle area. And so we need that fully funded too, so then I could hire more community ambassadors to spread that work, that more work. Diversion work works. What we're doing is this diversion work, keeping kids out of the system, being proactive and being preventive, is working. Working with kids in the system, going into the courts, helping them pull, pulling them out of the fire, is working. We're getting them opportunities, we're getting them services, they're getting jobs, they're getting apartments, and they're moving forward in life, and that's what we need to be supporting. Thank you.
Great, John. Nikita, before you get started, I'd like to call the next names, and it looks like Nikki, Restorative Justice, then Alice Lockhart, Josh Castle, Dave Kavanaugh. Please.
Good morning, Council. First of all, I just want to say I feel very overwhelmed by the number of needs in this room that are still having to advocate for what they need, like the tiny homes, the assistance for renters, the restorative justice. When I think about the $409 million that are being given to the police department, they don't have to write grants for that, they don't have to advocate for that. It's almost a given, and yet they do so much destruction in our communities, and it is our job to do the work of undoing that harm and that trauma. And so I'm asking you to drop in the bucket, fully fund this restorative justice package. It's $532,000 in the face of the $409 million in the police department and the millions upon millions in the court and prosecution system that is literally dismantling our communities and sending our children through the school-to-prison pipeline. With Coach Dom at Community Passageways, corner greeters and Creative Justice, we're doing the work of healing our communities and ensuring our young people get to have the brighter future that this country continues to promise them. So please fully fund our work. Thank you.
But only Gordon has managed to come. May we each have a minute?
I'm sorry, who's all there?
Mass Coalition, myself and Gordon Padelford.
Gordon Padelford? Gordon, you're not signed up. Are you part of this?
I'm later in the thing, but we could go now if you want.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Gordon.
Okay, thanks.
Come on up. And I'm sorry, just a second, before you get started, what's your name?
Nikki.
Okay, so it's actually Nikki's first, and then we'll take the two of you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Nikki.
My name is Nikki Etienne, and Nikita's doing the work. Pay her, support programs like Creative Justice. There's no way that those programs will continue to survive off of jumping through hoops and fighting against similar important programs for the same multiple grants, and then have to wait for the funding. Have the police department wait for funding like Black and Brown wait for funding underfunded schools like Rainier Beach. If our community doesn't feel safe, you need to restructure where the funds are being used. The police department doesn't need more funding for a job they're not doing well at. They spend more time training combative situations when they need to be moving that funding to better de-escalating training. We wouldn't even need all of that funding for that department if they had better relationship with our community. And you do that by investing in us. Investing Creative Justice, investing corner greeters and Community Passageways, that's how you cut costs down, have less crime, and get zero youth incarceration. The police doesn't need more funding, the community does.
All right, Alice and Gordon, and then after you two, Josh Castle, Dave Kavanaugh, and Jessica.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Thanks so much for your work on the budget. I'd like to speak briefly to transportation equity in the budget, and as such, to thank you for preserving the modest funding for the transportation equity agenda. However, as long as SDOT uses outdated level of service analysis and planning projects, transportation equity will not be reflected in how SDOT spends its budget. And SLI, SDOT 19B1, unfortunately fell through the cracks. It listed as things that would have changed at SDOT in how it plans its project, greenhouse gas reduction, emission reduction, multimodal transportation centering, that safety and bikeable, walkable, rollable neighborhoods, among other things. So I understand that this is gone, but please do help, find a way to help SDOT replace level of service with equitable project planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon?
The Mass Coalition as well, and Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, just want to say thank you for a number of things. First, the Act of Transportation Coordinator. Right now, this morning, we're co-leading a walk with the Principal of Bay Lake Gatzer to try and figure out how to get kids past gangs and dangerous streets to school. And there's no one at the school district really who's there able to help, but this position will be able to help with those sort of issues. The Transportation Equity Agenda, 3-B-1. Racial equity cannot be addressed at the systemic level without support of large institutions like SDOT. This is absolutely critical to that work. 4-B-1, Southeast Seattle Bike Projects. It's critical to provide safe and affordable access to opportunity for everyone. 7-B-1, the crosswalk requested by the Duamish Tribe to get people across a really dangerous street to their longhouse is really important for them and everyone trying to get there. 12-C-1, you know, two out of every three days, there's going to be a major event at the Seattle, the new arena. We need to get people there safely and affordably. And the Home Zone Pilot is incredibly effective. Thank you so much.
Great, thank, Gordon, thank you. Josh Castle, Dave Kavanaugh, and Jessica, will you all please get ready to speak? Thank you, Josh.
Sorry, Camp Second Chance is actually just before me. Camp Second Chance residents, is it okay if they speak before me?
It's okay, buddy. I don't have, I don't have, who is that? Juan Lopez? Okay, great, thank you. Hi there, sorry, it looks like your name was crossed out, so I apologize for skipping you.
My name's Eric Davis. I am a resident manager for Lehigh at Camp Second Chance. We really just want to come here to thank you for all the advocacy you've done so far. We really appreciate all the expansion you're allowing us to have, and we have a few residents that want to express their thank you as well.
My name is Eric Patton. I'm the co-founder of Camp Second Chance. I'm also a village organizer at True Hope Village. I think it's very important to have these tiny house villages to transition from homelessness to affordable housing, and that's pretty much what I got to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle. I'm a resident at Camp Second Chance, and I'd like to first of all, thank you very much for allowing us to be there. But also, I'd like to say that I think the only way you can fully understand the needs of the homeless, whether on the streets or in encampments, is that if you challenge yourself and put yourself in the plight of people that, you know, it seems unfathomable that they have to live like that. And I think if you do that for even a night, you will see why we are, you know, are asking for, you know, tiny house villages and help for the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for another opportunity to be grateful for having a tiny house village over my head. My name's Cassandra Gaspar, and I too am not only employed by Lehigh, but I'm also a resident of Camp Second Chance. I pray that the displacement of the other villagers will be a quick transition, and also that we could be a role model for what's to come in the future for Seattle and the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Lorraine Kay, and I am a Star Student Together Against Racism and for the National Commerce with Community and Justice. I am a recent evictee and now have become homeless. Camp Second Chance has provided me with an overnight stay as tenants are in a process to become official permanent tenants in tiny homes. And I am grateful because they were able to take me in and they're able to provide me with a three-night stay during this process to get approved to be a more permanent member of a tiny home. I would like to thank you for putting together the People's Budget Vote, and let's stay together and get this voted in to keep tiny houses alive. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Josh, David Kavanaugh, Jessica, and then Steve Rubstow.
Thank you. I'm Josh Castle with Lehigh. I have a whole bunch of thank yous, so hopefully I can get to them quickly. I want to thank you, thank Councilmember Sawant in Mesquita for including the funding of tiny house villages. Thank you, Councilmember Pacheco, for safe parking and the root shelter. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for the funding of mobile pit stops. Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez, for the funding of the Home for Good Rental Assistance Program. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for your leadership on the People's Budget. And I want to thank my outstanding Councilmember Juarez for your leadership on affordable housing, LEED, and so much else in D5. And thank you, Councilmember O'Brien and Bagshaw, for your leadership on the Council, for tiny houses, affordable housing, and so much more. We will miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. David, Jessica, Steve, Nicole Grant.
Hey, everyone, I'm Dan. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative, and I'm here with the People's Budget Movement. Yeah, so last week, we had an election in Seattle, and it was widely seen as, you know, a referendum on corporate power in this city. And I think the voters really spoke and showed that, you know, we don't want big business controlling City Hall. So I think everyone on this council should see that as a mandate, you know, not to pass another big business budget that critically underfunds things we need, but to actually pass a People's Budget. And specifically, you know, instead of spending $8.3 million on violent sweeps of homeless encampments that don't work, I think this council should fund solutions that work. And I don't know if y'all know this, but our People's Budget Movement has already won a few victories, including two lawyers for, to help people facing evictions, and $2 million for tiny house villages. And that's the power that we have as a movement, but we also know that that's not enough, right? You know, these corporate landlords, they have teams of lawyers to evict people. We can afford, as a city, four lawyers to help people facing eviction. You know, if we can afford $8.3 million for sweeps, we can afford spending that money for tiny house villages, which actually work and actually help people instead of hurting people. So, you know, we've already won victories here, but we're not going to stop fighting.
We are ready to fight. Housing is a human right. We are ready to fight. Housing is a human right.
Jessica? And then Steve, then Nicole Grant.
Good morning, my name is Jessica, and I'm pretty much seconding what a lot of people have already said here. I'm in high support of a People's Budget. I don't want to see any money going to inhumane sweeps of homeless people, and I want to see it instead going to affordable housing and tiny homes. And then also, as far as restorative justice is concerned, I don't really think that we need to be giving police bonuses, and I think that money needs to be going to restorative justice programs that have already been spoken about before I came up here. And then also, I'm glad that all the moms who demand action are here speaking out for any programs that will help reduce gun violence. I'm in favor of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. Steve, Nicole, Lata Ahmed, and then Kelsey Mesher.
Yeah, I still don't see any tree huggers up here, but more to the budget, let's take a look at MHA. We were supposed to have 50/50. In the North End, we're finding that people are buying out. Now, that'd be a lot more money for housing if you would simply raise those fees to something that's commensurate, to get the 50/50 that the Land Use Committee, and I believe the Council, was supporting. Now, you have a big hole in your budget on transit right now, those tab fee situation, you know? The evil car drivers, you know? They seem to be rebelling. How about taking a look at the causes and the need for transit? How about looking with the state to possibly take buildings of three stories or more and putting a surtax on? Something that would relate to the need for transit and the expansion of these buildings would actually go towards making it work, rather than you see cars now which are declining.
Thank you, Steve. Nicole Grant?
I don't get the extra time that some of the other folks did. Thank you.
And Nicole Grant, Lata, Kelsey Mesher.
Thank you, Nicole Grant from MLK Labor. You guys have worked very hard on a budget with some very exciting priorities for working class people in Seattle. I want to say how important the Fair Share Campaign for Uber and Lyft drivers continues to be for the labor movement, and I want to also express our support for other transportation issues. I would like to show support for the outreach funding for downtown tolling. It's time for us to get away from single occupancy vehicles. I would like to express support for Green New Deal funding, and I would like to express support for our brothers and sisters in the film industry, the music industry, and all the entertainment arts. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nicole. Hello, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you, CRO City Councilmember. My name is Lata. I'm from Uber and Lyft driver. I'm here with our driver community. It's diverse, coming from all across, and we really thank you, City Councilmember, for supporting our Fair Share Plan. And drivers are united around three priorities, and I want to welcome one of my brother to speak a little bit more about these priorities. I want to introduce David. Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name's Don Creary. I want to thank you folks for the Fair Share legislation that you're going to proceed with. Every day in this country, there's an ongoing human rights violation, which is driver deactivation. As we speak right now, drivers are losing their livelihoods due to reasons they don't even know. At this point, Uber's background company, check company called Checker, is pretty much has their own rules. Drivers are losing their jobs due to things which are not even related to the job, to the driving. It's something they've popped up somehow or other in Checker's algorithms, and they're deactivated. This legislation that you folks are going to proceed with is going to bring an end to that in this city, and it's going to be a message, once again, that the Seattle City Council sends to the rest of the country. Going forward, we really look forward to working with you on driver pay. These jobs were one-time middle-class jobs. The Seattle City Council has the power to make those jobs, middle-class jobs, once again. I hope that you can proceed with this with the boldness that the voters two weeks ago expressed through our elections. So, thank you very much. And Councilmembers Herbold, Sawant, Juarez, congratulations, and it's going to be an honor to work with you.
My name is Nureen Adam Fufana. We've been here a couple of times. We complained, and we are here today to say thank you very much, Councilmembers. And we want you to know that we support the other package of the initiative that is going on. Thank you very much, and we are looking forward to, I mean, work with you and get Seattle, I mean, drivers to be the first to have this kind of initiative, like Driver Support Center and deactivation, I mean unfair deactivation process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers. My statement will be thanking three members that are living, with my Brian, Sally, Pachau, and Bruce. City of Seattle will miss you deeply.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you for your service. We need you back, come back. And thank you very much, welcome. I want to say a billion congratulations to Shama. Well done, thank you.
So, I'll take just a few seconds. You guys heard enough why we are here. So, it's just the fair deactivation is the big problem here in this industry, and I want to tell you today, today, my own experience. In four hours, less than four hours, I have got hit twice. Not fault, not fault, somebody just pulled right in the front. So, we are all human, we do make mistakes. It's not we always right, but please can take into consideration. We really appreciate the help, and thank you so much for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Before you get started, we have Kelsey, Travis Johnson, and Alan, then Yuri, then Megan. And Councilcolleagues, I had said I was going to cut this off at 10:30. We only have seven left, and if I don't hear any objection, I'd like to get through all seven. Okay. Kelsey, please proceed.
Good morning, Kelsey Mesher. I'm here for Transportation Choices Coalition. I want to thank you all for your support thus far of the Fair Share Coalition. Over 50 organizations came together around this package, and I know you'll be considering some additional amendments today on how the revenue will be spent, and just want to ask that you really consider how Seattle can continue to show unity and support that you really consider how Seattle can continue to show unity and support for the streetcar project, because we still have an FTA, a $75 million FTA grant that we want to qualify for and really make sure that we bring that here. In addition, I want to express strong support for maintaining the engagement funds for congestion pricing. You know, right now, we heavily subsidize roads and driving in our city. It's very inequitable, and this is an opportunity to create a policy that could actually be quite progressive. We could have a progressive rate structure. We could reinvest the money into transit and walking and biking, help with, you know, cleaner air, but we need to do the engagement right and put impacted people at the center, and that requires resources. So, please maintain that funding. Thank you.
Very good. Kelsey, thank you for all your work. Travis, and then Alan, about tiny houses. Can't read the last name. Mortick, maybe? Yuri Wang, Megan Murphy.
Good evening. My name is Travis Johnson. I'm a Georgetownian resident of the Tiny House Village of Georgetown. I would like to personally thank the Georgetown community for having me. I would like to personally thank this city council for listening to me today. I would also like to personally thank Councilman Sawant for her -- how do I say this in the nicest -- for her help for the little man, because us little people love her spirit that she gives us. She gives us a complete faith in trying and getting -- she took on Amazon and won. And I was just happy when I saw it.
Thank you, Travis.
I'd like to thank the Georgetown community for all the support to the Georgetown Tiny Home Village. I would like to thank the Lehigh, especially Josh Castle, who is in stands. I would like to also say thank you all for having me, and I'm just a little guy. Travis out.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Alan, Yuri, and Megan.
Good morning, council. My name is Solly. I can't read what that says. How many times you've heard our voices here requiring for tiny house villages and determination to run our own lives, but groups like Lehigh and HSD are taking away from us. We're hoping that there's a lot of chance we'll be able to get some land from you so we can build our own tiny house village, not to shut down the one that you're considering closing in December, just before the holidays. We hope you all take this into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Yuri?
Hi.
Yuri, Megan, and then it looks like George Parish.
I'd like to say hello to Seattle City Council. I'm Yuri Wang, and I'm here to speak in support of expanding tiny house villages. Currently, there are nine villages, and I support the proposed expansion for 40 villages. Mayor Durkin's navigation team is not working. It's inhumane and a waste of money to sweep encampments without having a place for the homeless to go. Cost-effective tiny houses are the best way to get the homeless out of the cold and transitioning into living wage jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Megan? Megan, it looks like Mr. Parish. Then some folks are talking about youth consortium again, and Aiden Carroll.
Hi. I would like to say no to business as usual and yes to the people's budget. So, yeah. Please expand tiny house village funding as Sawant is suggesting. Well, I think it really needs to happen because there's a housing crisis because the real estate state. And when the real estate is in control, then policing is really brutal. So I think we need to have more community fabric knitted together with community policing. So that's why I support Nikita Oliver's ideas about restorative justice, because I think locking people up in tiny cells is really inhumane and wrong. And then also, fund lawyers for all renters facing evictions. And I think transit should be free for all. So, I'm working with the Transit Riders Union, and the IMINs tags or whatever, we need to find a way to override that and have free transport for all, because there is an environmental crisis.
Thank you. Mr. Parish? Then speakers about the youth consortium. I'm not sure what it is, but be free. And then Aiden Carroll is our last speaker.
My name is Jav. My name is Jav Parish. My apologies, my bad handwriting. As some of you know, I've been writing on and reporting on city politics for decades, but I have never actually testified before City Council before. But looking at the mayor's budget this year, I found it a continuing trend of being deeply counterproductive to trying to solve the housing and homelessness crisis in the city. I'm also past Board President of Roots, so thank you for considering the money for relocation for Roots. It's an essential youth homeless shelter. And the tiny house village eviction money, this mayor wanted to spend over $1 million, has been mitigated somewhat, but it needs to be excised entirely. It's insane to be putting people out on the street in the middle of winter when people are literally dying in record numbers on the street. I can't possibly address all of the relevant amendments, but we desperately need more tiny house villages. We need more funding for homelessness services, and we need less police sweeps. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We have Speaker for Youth Consortium, and then Aiden Carroll, and that will wrap up our public comment.
Yeah, it says, "Rail be free," by the way. I'm also known as Jarrell Davis. I came up here a few weeks ago on behalf of the Renner Beach Action Coalition, as well as Creative Justice and Community Passageways, and I want to encourage you all to fully fund that project. And I want to talk about why, though. Last time I came, and I rattled off a number of organizations that are doing the work in the city of Seattle, that are actually looking to reduce the amount of criminalization that happens to our young people in these neighborhoods. And I rattled not a bar of organizations off, but I want to talk about the efficacy. If these programs are not fully funded, you're reducing the amount of efficacy that can come out of it. We're reducing the productivity of these organizations and the work that's being done. The young people that are a part of Creative Justice, I myself have been a teaching artist. The young people of Creative, of Community Passageways, I've worked with Community Passageways as well. These young people are actually making a lot of changes in their neighborhoods, and by not fully funding it, you are saying that you're okay with the police being fully funded, and these programs that are looked to reduce the amount of the trauma and the effect that the police have on our neighborhoods. You're saying that you're okay with the police being fully funded and our neighborhoods not being fully funded. That is inequitable.
Thank you, Rail be free. Aiden?
You can look down at your computer. I have Tourette's Syndrome. So, please protect Nickelodeon's. Whatever the reality of repeated corruption and allegations against Scott Morrow or Cher and Lehigh, trying to be all high and mighty, the organization residents should not be tainted by it, let alone turn down on the street. It's cost-effective. A few months ago, TC3 were forced to suddenly move to Rent-A-Boulevard because they didn't have any other space. Cities should be working to make sure they always have a space. What's the, you know, this lack of process? What's the process required before evicting someone or sweeping them? I want to support the tenants' defense attorneys and lawyer rights trainings. The answer to sweeps, there's a minimum baseline in federal court in Martin versus Boise, but the mayor Durkin has gotten very, very good at going around that. Actual complaints means you need to stop the sweeps until it's much, much more funding for enhanced shelters, supportive housing that will move people to consensually. Even then, the sweeps should end if we have outreach with the same trash and sanitation services for everyone else. An RV South of Tank in Seattle, people have to drive to shoreline and pay for it. Oh, my God, this is so complicated and, you know, well, limited time, but thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. So that brings us to the end of all who have signed up for public comment. Thank you so much for coming. Now, I just want to give you a quick rundown, once again, of where we're going. I've got a few comments about what's in our revised package. I have a few comments about Initiative 976. Then we're going to talk about our consent package, and I'm going to ask my colleagues once again if you want to remove items before we get into the consent package. Finally, we're going to be looking at items that we want to add and be discussing those will be after we've done the consent package and then the items that are removed from the consent package. So, I appreciate everybody being here. We've got eight of us on the dais. I believe that Councilmember Miss Gata is not calling in, but we wish her well and look forward to having her back. So, today, what's in the revised package? I would just like to talk about this. When we first started talking about my budget package, I focused on housing. I wanted to focus on making sure that people who are homeless have the services that they need. We focused on LEED and getting the services that people need. So we really focused on public health as well. I know that that was difficult based upon all of the other things that were working and happening to us in the transportation world. But this council is really committed to taking the money that we have available to us in the general fund and being able to invest for people oftentimes struggling at the low end of the economic income gap, which we all up here recognize the struggles. And then people who are struggling with addictions, people that are stuck in the spin cycle of criminal justice. We want to be looking at how we can make the systemic improvements that we have all been talking about now for months. So, in this revised package, we're providing additional funding to expand the number of tiny home villages and 24/7 enhanced shelters. Colleagues, there is one item that we will have to vote on today. I want to make sure that 24/7 shelters are available to us, that we're not limiting our investments to tiny homes. I am a huge supporter of tiny homes and have been for a decade now, but having 24/7 permanent shelters for people to go in where they can stay, where they can sleep anytime during the day, to get the food, services, and case managers that they need, I believe are equally as important, not competing with our tiny homes. So, I want to acknowledge in our revised budget package, just since we had Form C's, Councilmember Herbold, in the balancing package, we've added $180,000 to create a pilot program for mobile pump-out services for RVs. This is in addition to what we were looking at for the mobile toilets, which is already in the budget, so thank you for bringing that forward. It includes another $115,000 for SDI to contract for two attorneys that will provide legal defense assistance to individuals facing eviction. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Sawant. It's not as many as you wanted, but it is two, not zero, and we're happy to be able to do that in this package. Also, Councilmember Sawant and Council President Harrell, this package includes $300,000 for diversion programs for alternatives to youth incarceration. I don't know, Dom, if you're still here, raise your hand. Thank you so much for the good work that you've been doing. I recognize that more is going to be invested as we're looking at our systemic changes. And other revisions in this package today that was different from what we saw a couple of weeks ago, Councilmember O'Brien, you're adding $300,000 to support implementation of the Transportation Equity Agenda. I believe that there's a little money coming out of congestion pricing for another ad you have today, but that $300,000 is intact. Also, we're adding $67,000 added to existing funds for our Office of Housing's Low Income Home Buyer Counseling. And that many of us are supporting the $170,000 to the Office for Civil Rights for the Criminal Legal System Outreach and Engagement, and also at the request of the Department of Neighborhoods to report on a strategy to develop community-led violence prevention initiative in Westwood and South Del Ridge. I want to say thank you, Councilmember Herbold, once again, for your advocacy for your district. So I want to have just a few words about Initiative 976. 976, when it passed, was -- had a tremendous impact on the city of Seattle. And as we know, it approved by a statewide vote, and as it has been reported, the city believes that this particular initiative, another of Tim Iman's 13 or 14 initiatives, we believe it's unconstitutional. We are seeking an injunction to I-976 to protect funding for the critical public services that are included in the city's budget. And that includes the additional bus services that our voters have voted for. I-976 would eliminate the city's authority to collect vehicle license fees. This would cut about $24 million for transit funding, funding that our voters had voted for. That would reduce the amount of transit services, the number of bus hours that we purchased from King County, by one-third, beginning in 2020. It would also erase about $8 million for basic maintenance, such as repairing potholes. I don't think any of us in this room think that cutting these essential transportation services is appropriate, particularly while we are fighting the constitutionality of I-976. I believe that these cuts would cause irreparable harm to our city, to the transit programs, to our abilities just to get around, and most specifically, that it has negative impact on the users, the residents, people that are struggling just to get around with mobility issues. And I am a strong believer that taking this matter to court is critical. And therefore, with the knowledge that our lawyers have requested an injunction, I believe that it has been filed now, our budget is not going to try to address the transportation issues. So, we are focused on housing and human services and public health and our criminal justice reform efforts like LEED. And I want to have us continue, even though I will not be here with you next year, to continue on these systemic changes that will make a difference in people's lives. And I do want to acknowledge again to my colleagues, to council central staff, all of you who have been working amazing hours to help us, that we could not be doing this without our council central staff. And I am more appreciative than ever about what you do to help us write and rewrite and amend and do it again over the last number of months. So please know I appreciate you. I appreciate the public that has come to comment to us, to let us know how strongly you feel about things. Your voices matter, and you have made a difference, so I want to thank you. So, moving on, for today's decision, the council budget actions, and we have a number of them. We have, I think, 182 as of last night. We are going to have a three-part process and a three-step process that's going to finalize our 2020 budget package. So we started with the approval of the agenda. The next item is consideration of the consent package, at which time members can pull things out for additional conversation, discussion, or amendment. We're going to first vote on the consent package with the items removed, and then, after we go through this, we'll look at the added items. We will discuss the removed items. So, you know how to vote. When we're ready to vote, we're going to have each item. We'll request a voice vote on each item, and then council central staff and our clerk will be tallying this. So again, when we vote, ask to hold your hands up high and hold them up until the vote is done. And as a reminder, council colleagues, our ever-tough Amelia tells me that once we have voted, and once I've announced the result of the vote, that we can't go back and revote. So we want to make sure that if there are any questions, let me know before I call for the vote. And if I haven't been clear, we'll get council central staff to help us. So we're going to now move on to the consent package. This package includes all the council budget actions and the statements of legislative intent that we have discussed already and included in our revised budget. So again, I'm going to start moving through this process to ask those who want to remove something from the consent package that we do that. And then we're going to run through, by title, every item of the consent package that have not been removed. So I know that everybody is going to enjoy approximately 170 items that you're going to read to us one by one. But the items that are removed from the consent package will be considered in order of their council budget action number, and we will turn to Ali when we get to that point. So now we're going to move on to the consent package, and I'm going to ask each council member if you'd like to remove items from the consent package for a separate vote. And I'm going to be starting off first by requesting to remove item 33, which is the CBA HSD 100A-1. We don't have to describe what they are now. We will come back to those. So, at this point, I'm going -- excuse me.
You need to ask to remove the version who's substituting.
Got it. Okay, good. Can I just repeat that? That if you have-- That if you have an item that you want to have removed and substituted, the opportunity is now to remove it from the... using the original budget number, our council budget action number. Okay, so I have already requested to remove item number 33. That's HSD 100A1. And I'm just going to go down the row, starting with Councilmember Pacheco. Do you have anything you would like to remove from the consent agenda at this time?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Herbold?
Yes, please. I'd like to remove item number 82, CBO 2B1, from the consent package.
Okay, you've got that. I'll just look to you. Allie, you've got it. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have anything you'd like to remove at this time?
Yes, I have three items I'd like to remove from the consent agenda. The first agenda item is Agenda Item 42. This is going to be a substitution for CBA number CJ 921A1. The second item is Agenda Item 56. This will be a substitute for CBA number SDOT 912A1. And the third will be Agenda Item 159. That'll also be a substitution for CBA number LAW 900A1.
Okay. Allie, do you have something you'd like to add here?
I would just note that the items that are on the agenda that will be removed are item 42, CJ 21A2, item number 33... excuse me, item number 56 on the agenda, SDOT 12C1, and item number 159, SPD 8B1. And then the numbers that Councilmember Gonzalez read in are the substitute versions that we'll discuss later in the agenda.
Oh, sorry about that.
Do I not need to make substitutes now, or should I make them now?
If there's something that you want to have removed that will be substituted, please make it now.
I made the motion for removal. I'm asking whether or not I need to make the motion to substitute or wait.
You just need to remove it from the consent package, and then we'll deal with the substitutions later.
This is just a simple line item of the original item you'd like to have removed. Councilmember Brandt? Councilmembers, what?
Do I get a shot?
Do you have any?
We just skipped over the council president.
No, I do not. But can you repeat... Can you repeat yours and Councilmember Herbold's, please?
Mine with Council Budget Action, HSD 100...
What number?
A, item 33.
33?
Correct.
And Councilmember Herbold's was?
82.
Which one?
82.
82, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Council President Harrell, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do not. At least, thanks for the courtesy.
Councilmember Brandt?
I do not.
Councilmembers, what?
I would like to remove item number 3, CBA HOM 3B3, from the consent package because I intend to propose a change to the proviso language. So I would like to discuss it separately.
Do you want to change item 3?
3.
All right, very good. And Allie, would you like to read back to make sure we've got them all?
Sure, thank you. So there will be six items removed from the consent package at this point. Again, council members will have an opportunity, if, as Tom and Lisa are reading the items into the record, there's any others you'd like to pull or, excuse me, to remove from the consent package or at the end of the discussion of the consent package. But what we have on the list right now are six items: CBO 2B1, CJ 21A2, HOM 3B2, HSD 100A1, SDOT 12C1, and SPD 8B1.
Very good, thank you. So I have those numbers, and I appreciate that. Okay, so I think we're ready at this time to move forward with council central staff to read back and proceed with reading them into the record, each item of the consent package as you have it in front of you. And I know everybody have a cup of coffee or a glass of water and sit back and enjoy.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Tom, Mike, so council central staff. Similar to last week, we, Lisa, Kay, and myself, will be reading through the items in the consent package. So we'll kind of trade off about a third of the way through or so. And also, similar to last week, we are going to be going through the list of the budget investments according to the chair's budget priorities as stated. So I'll make note of when we transition from each priority area. So with that, I'll start. Item 1 is HOM 1A3, which adds $206,000 from the general fund in one-time funds to the Human Services Department for mental health outreach workers in University District and Ballard, and it also imposes a proviso. Agenda item 2, HOM 2C1, adds $815,000 general fund, including $142,000 in one-time funds, to the Human Services Department to open a tiny home village, and it imposes a proviso. Item 3 has been removed for further discussion. Item 4 is a statement of legislative intent, HOM 4A2, which requests a report on sites for a tiny home village. Item 5, HOM 5B2, adds $1.5 million from the general fund in one-time funding to the Human Services Department for relocation and building renovations for a youth homelessness shelter. Item 6, HOM 6B1, adds $210,000 from the general fund to the Human Services Department for homeless outreach in North Seattle. Item 7, HOM 7B1, adds $100,000 from the general fund to Human Services Department for vehicle resident outreach and parking offense mitigation. Item 8, HOM 8B2, adds $158,000 from the general fund on a one-time basis to operate an overnight-only safe parking lot. Item 9, HOM 10B2, adds $1 million from the general fund, including $395,000 in one-time funding, to the Human Services Department to expand homeless services and improve outcomes for American Indian and Alaska Native homeless individuals. Item 10, HOM 11A3, adds $100,000 from the general fund to the Human Services Department for legal services for homeless youth and imposes a proviso. Item 11, which is a statement of legislative intent, is HOM 12C1. It requests a report on the Samaritan Program's impacts on Human Services Department contractees. Item 12, HOM 13B1, adds $700,000 from the general fund in one-time funds to the Human Services Department to create a rental assistance pilot and imposes a proviso. Item 13, HOM 15-C1, imposes a proviso on navigation team appropriations in the Human Services Department. Item 14, HOM 19B1, adds $159,000 from the general fund on a one-time basis to the Human Services Department to hire a 1.0 FTE Term Limited Senior Planning and Development Specialist position. Item 15, HOM 60A1, cuts $125,000 from the general fund from the Human Services Department to reduce the Safe Parking Pilot Program. Item 16, HOM 61A1, cuts $345,000 on a one-time basis from the general fund from the Human Services Department's regional authority startup costs and imposes a proviso. Item 17, HOM 62B1, reduces appropriations in the Human Services Department for tiny home village relocation by $1.262 million from the general fund on a one-time basis. Item 18, HSD 50B2, adds $1.8 million from the general fund in one-time funds to the Human Services Department to construct a health clinic. I'll now move to investments in the housing priority area. Item 19, CBA OH 1B1, adds $50,000 of fund balance in 2022 in the Office of Housing to implement affirmative marketing and community preference plans. Item 20, OH 2B1, adds $100,000 from the general fund on a one-time basis to the Office of Housing for pre-development and planning costs for an affordable housing project in Little Saigon. Item 21, adds $150,000 on a one-time basis from the general fund to the Office of Housing for pre-development and planning costs for affordable housing projects for low-income residents in the Central District. Item 22, OH 4B2, adds $12.75 million from the general fund on a one-time basis to the Office of Housing to the Rental Production and Preservation Program to make financing commitments for the 2019 Notice of Funding Availability. Item 23, OH 7B2, adds $67,000 on a one-time basis in 2020 to the Office of Housing for homebuyer counseling. Item 24, OH 8B1, imposes a proviso on $2.5 million in the Office of Housing dedicated for an accessory dwelling unit loan program. Item 25, OH 9A1, cuts $18.2 million from the general fund on a one-time basis and proposed funding for programs supported by the Mercer Property Sales Proceeds, including the Strategic Investment Fund, the Affordable Home Ownership Acquisition Program, and the Attached Dwelling Unit Loan Program, and directs those funds for other council priorities. Item 26, FG 1A2, imposes a proviso on the Strategic Investment Fund in Finance General. I'll now move into discussion of investments in the hygiene priority category. Item 27, HOM 9C1, adds $75,000 in the general fund to the Human Services Department for women's hygiene products and diapers at emergency shelters. Item 28, HOM 16A2, adds $1,284,000 from the general fund, $558,000 of which is one-time, to develop mobile bathroom facilities. Item 29, HOM 50A2, adds $115,000 from the general fund to Seattle Public Utilities to expand the encampment trash program with a nonprofit provider. Item 30, SPR 1B1, adds $244,000 in King County levy funding to Seattle Parks and Recreation to provide additional shower services for homeless individuals at several community centers, and amends the Comfort Station Renovation CIP project. Item 31, SPU 4A2, adds $179,712 in the Seattle Public Utilities Department for a pilot program of mobile pump-out services to RVs and cuts and funds this ad with a cut of $179,712 from two SPU accounts. And I'll now discuss investments in the law enforcement assisted diversion or LEAD category. Item 32, HSD 99C2, adds $3.5 million from the general fund ongoing to the Human Services Department to contract with a law enforcement assisted diversion program, and adds 1.0 unfunded Assistant City Attorney and imposes three provisos. Item 33... Actually, item 33 has been removed for further discussion later. Item 34, Ledge 7A1, adds $120,000 from the general fund on a one-time basis to the Legislative Department to fund a contract for an analysis of the law enforcement assisted diversion I'll now discuss investments in criminal justice. Item 35 is a statement of legislative intent, CJ 1B1, which requests the city auditor to conduct a review of Seattle Municipal Court's probation program. Item 36, CJ 2B2, imposes a proviso on Finance General Reserves for law staffing of a case conferencing pilot. Item 37, CJ 3A2, imposes a proviso on Finance General Reserves for a rapid reentry connector pilot at the King County Jail. Item 38, CJ 4C1, cuts $170,000 from Finance General Reserves for high-barrier probation and adds $170,000 of the general fund to the Office of Civil Rights for Criminal Legal System Outreach and Engagement, and opposes two provisos on OCR, the Office of Civil Rights, and opposes a proviso on Finance General Reserves. And I would note that this is a replacement to what was in the original balancing package, which did not reflect the sponsor's original intent. This version does reflect the sponsor's intent. Item 39, CJ 5A2, imposes a proviso on $50,000 in the Office of Civil Rights for community-based organizations to respond to hate violence. Item 40, CJ 6A2, requests that the Office of Civil Rights spend a portion of its $1 million in its 2020 proposed budget on community-based organizations to create restorative justice approaches to individuals committing hate crimes. Item 41, CJ 7A2, requests that... is a statement of legislative intent that requests that the Seattle Municipal Court report back to council on how it would implement high-barrier probation. Item 42 has been removed for further discussion. Item 43, which is a statement of legislative intent, CJ 24A2, requests that the Law Department report on expanding pre-filing diversion opportunities to those over age 25. Item 44, a statement of legislative intent, CJ 26A2, requests that the Seattle Police Department develop a reporting mechanism that accurately captures race data. Item 45, CJ 61B1, adds $124,000 of one-time funding from the general fund for sex industry workers diversion program and imposes a proviso. Item 46, CJ 62C1, adds $300,000 of one-time funding from the general fund for youth diversion, community-building, and education programs. And with that, we will move into the transportation category, and now I'll hand over to Lisa.
Nicely done, Tom.
Good morning, councilmembers. Lisa Kay, central staff. Item 47 on your agenda is CBA SDOT 1A2. This would add $150,000 of school safety, traffic, and pedestrian improvement funds for SDOT to pay for an active transportation coordinator at Seattle Public Schools. Item 48 is a statement of legislative intent. It's SDOT 2C2. It requests that SDOT report on current maintenance spending for bicycle infrastructure. Item 49 is SDOT 3B1. It adds $300,000 of general fund from the Transportation Network Company tax and one FTE for SDOT to support implementation of the Transportation Equity Agenda, and cuts $300,000 out of the Finance General Reserve to pay for that. Item 50 is SDOT 4-B-1. This will redirect $2 million of the Mercer Mega Block proceeds to the Bicycle Master Plan, Protected Bike Lane CIP project, amend the CIP project page, and add a spending proviso. Item 51 is SDOT 7B1. This will add $500,000 of general fund from the Transportation Network Company tax and establish a CIP project in SDOT for west marginalway safe street and accessibility improvements. Item 52 is a statement of legislative intent. It's SDOT 8-B-1. This requests that SDOT provide a center-city streetcar connector financial plan. Item 53 is SDOT 9-B-2. This proviso is spending on the Del Ridge Way Southwest Rapid Ride H Line CIP project. Item 54 is SDOT 10B2. This adds $400,000 of general fund money from the Transportation Network Company tax to SDOT and establishes a CIP project for Fortson Square redesign implementation. Item 55 is SDOT 11B1. This adds $400,000 of general fund Transportation Network Company tax revenue for SDOT's Market to Mohi CIP project. Item 56 was pulled for future discussion. Item 57 is SDOT 14-B-1. This adds $150,000 of general fund revenue from the Transportation Network Company tax to SDOT for a public life study of Capitol Hill. Item 58 is SDOT 17-A-3. This would pass Council Bill 119699 for a free-floating car share permit... affecting the free-floating car share permit fee ordinance. Item 59 would be... is SDOT 23-B-1. This adds $350,000 of general fund revenue from the Transportation Network Company tax for SDOT to implement additional projects identified in the Home Zone Pilot. Item 60 is SDOT 24-A2. This adds $200,000 of school safety, traffic, and pedestrian improvement funds in the pedestrian master plan, New Sidewalk CIP project, for SDOT to construct walkway improvements along Northwest 100 and Northwest 132nd Street. Item 61 is a statement of legislative intent. It's SDOT25A2. This requests that SDOT and the City Budget Office report on the schedule and status of third-party funding discussions regarding Sound Transit's West Seattle and Ballard Link Extension Project. Item 62 is SDOT100-A1. This would amend and pass as amended Council Bill 119670, the Commercial Vehicle Load Zone Fee Ordinance. Item 63 is SDOT101A1. This would pass Council Bill 119679, the Mercer West Loan Extension. Item 64 is SDOT102A1. This will pass Council Bill 119680, the Southlake Union Streetcar Operating Loan Extension. Item 65 is SDOT201-A1. This will reduce by 3.05 million the Transportation Network Company tax revenue in Finance General Reserves for expenditures by the Seattle Department of Transportation. Item 66 is SDOT202A1. This would cut $134,150 of general fund and $115,850 of other funds for the Director of Citywide Mobility. Item 67 is SDOT400A1. This will pass Council Bill 119677, Central Waterfront Improvement Fund Interfund Loan Extension Bill. Item 68 is SDOT401A1. This will pass CB119678, Waterfront Local Improvement District Fund Interfund Loan Bill. Moving then to the section on Transportation Network Companies. Item 69 is TNCDRC-105A1. This will substitute Council Bill 119686, Version D3, for Version D2, and pass as amended. Item 70 is TNCFee-101A1. This will substitute Council Bill 119685, Version D2, for Version D1, and pass as amended. Item 71 is TNCMIN-103A1. This will substitute Council Bill 119687, Version D2, for D1A, and pass as amended. Item 72 is a statement of legislative intent, TNCSPN-103-B1. It requests that the Finance and Administrative Services Department and Seattle Department of Transportation report on the feasibility of a transportation assistance voucher program. Item 73 is TNCSPN104C1. This imposes two provisos on Finance General Reserves related to a transportation assistance voucher program. Item 74 is TNCSPN106D1. This would substitute Resolution 31914, Version D4, for Version D1D, and adopt as amended. And finally, in this section, item 75, TNCTEX103B1, would substitute Council Bill 119684, Version D4, for Version D2E, and pass. Moving then to other departments and offices. Item 76 is ARTS1A3. This adds $50,000 general fund to ARTS for the expansion of Coyote Central to the Lake City neighborhood. Item 77, ARTS2B1, adds $25,000 of admission tax to ARTS to support racial equity alignment. Item 78, ARTS3B1, adds $15,000 of admissions tax to ARTS for access to online historical resources. Item 79, ARTS4B1, cuts $31,413 in admissions tax from ARTS, and delays the hiring of one new position by three months. Item 80 is AUD1A2. This adds $61,976,000 in general fund, $3,590 Seattle City Light Fund, $1,544 Drainage and Wastewater Fund, $1,508 Water Fund, and $538 Solid Waste Fund revenue for salary increases for the executive manager and strategic advisor positions in the Office of City Auditor. Item 81 is CBO1A1. This is corrections to errata in the proposed budget and CIP. Item 82 has been pulled for additional discussion. Item 83 is a statement of legislative intent. This is CBO3A2. This requests that the City Budget Office develops a proposal for a compensation program for boards and commissions volunteers. Item 84 is a statement of legislative intent. It's City Budget Office, I'm sorry, CBO4A2. This requests a report from the City Budget Office on the use and contracted cost of beds at the King County Jail, and options for distribution of services inside the King County Jail. Item 85 is CBO20B1. This transfers $2.24 million from the Unrestricted Cumulative Reserve Fund to the General Fund. Item 86, CBO21A1, recognizes the City Budget Office's November 2019 forecast update. Item 87 is CBO22A1. This adds $750,000 ongoing revenue for 2019 Information Technology Fund rate true-up. Item 88 is CBO100A1. This will pass Council Bill 119681, City Budget Office Sweetened Beverage Tax Fund Policies Amendment Ordinance. Item 89 is CPC1B1. This adds $80,000 general fund in 2020 to the CPC to allow for contracting with outside legal counsel, and impose a proviso. Item 90 is CPC2A1. This adds $200,000 general fund in 2020 to the CPC to fund work plan items. Item 91 is a statement of legislative intent. It's DEEL1A2. This requests that the Department of Education and Early Learning conducts stakeholder engagement and report on, including labor harmony language, in childcare assistance program contracts. Item 92 is DEEL3A2. This imposes a proviso on a portion of the DEAL Childcare Assistance Program expansion funds to increase access to infant care. Item 93 is a statement of legislative intent. This is DEEL8B1. This requests that the Department of Education and Early Learning assess the feasibility of implementing the Washington State Opportunity Scholarship Program in Seattle, and report on progress. Item 94 is DON1A2. This adds $75,000 to the Department of Neighborhoods to support the Seattle Repertory Theater's Public Works Seattle Program. Item 95 is DON2A2. This adds $75,000 to the Department of Neighborhoods to support a South Park Public Safety Coordinator. Item 96 is DON3A2. This adds $34,000 to the Department of Neighborhoods for the Hub in the Box Program. Item 97 is a statement of legislative intent, DON4A2. This requests that the Department of Neighborhoods report on long-term funding opportunities to preserve and enhance P patches. Item 98 is a statement of legislative intent, DON5B2. It requests that the Department of Neighborhoods report on a strategy to develop a community-led, place-based violence prevention initiative in Westwood and South Del Ridge. I will turn it back to Tom to read the next batch.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Item 99, FAS1B1, amends the CIP page for the Finance and Administrative Services Fire Station 31 Improvements Project, and adds $500,000 for a temporary replacement fire station. Item 100, which is a statement of legislative intent, FAS5B1, requests the Department of Finance and Administrative Services to report on adding questions to Title VI Business License Applications. Item 101, FAS6B1, reduces appropriations in the Finance and Administrative Services Department for waterfront local improvement district payments for city-owned properties by $312,159. Item 102, FAS100A1, recommends passage of Council Bill 1196A2, which amends provisions related to apportionment of an income in determining business license tax liability to conform with state law. Item 103, FAS101A1, recommends passage of Council Bill 119683, which amends the due and payable provisions in the business license tax to conform with state law. Item 104, which is a statement of legislative intent, HSD1A2, requests that the Human Services Department reports on contracts with American Indian and Alaska Native organizations. Item 105, HSD4B1, adds $60,000 of one-time money in the General Fund for statewide human services lobbying and advocacy. Item 106, which is a statement of legislative intent, HSD5A2, requests a report from the Human Services Department on subsidizing transit passes for employees of HSD contracted services providers. Item 107, HSD10B1, adds $10,000 from the General Fund on an ongoing basis to support transportation and activities for low-income seniors. Item 108 is a statement of legislative intent, HSD20B1, requests improvements to utility discount program intake process. Item 109, HSD50A2, adds $55,000 from the General Fund on a one-time basis to the Human Services Department for educational programs targeted to the African-American diaspora on HIV/AIDS and chronic disease. Item 110, HSD53A2, imposes a proviso on funding for substance abuse disorder treatment programs. Item 111, HSD54B2, adds $140,000 from the General Fund on a one-time basis to the Human Services Department for a harm reduction outreach program for street-based sex workers and drug users. Item 112, HXM1A2, adds $23,000 for hearing examiner improvements. Item 113, LAW2A2, adds $113,077 from the General Fund to the Law Department for one FDE paralegal position to be a trauma-informed advocate for domestic violence firearm enforcement. Item 114, LAW4A1, cuts one FDE Assistant City Attorney position, and $207,014 from the General Fund on an ongoing basis from the Law Department. Item 115, LEG2A2, adds $20,770 for the General Fund to the Legislative Department for two reclassified Communications Division positions. Item 116, Ledge4B2, adds $48,539 from the General Fund to the Legislative Department, cuts one administrative staff analyst position, and adds one executive manager legislative position. Item 117, Ledge5A1, adds $100,000 from the General Fund to the Legislative Department to create an infant parent room. Item 118, OCR1B1, adds $15,000 from the General Fund to the Office of Civil Rights to fund Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations, and imposes a proviso. Item 119, OCR2B1, adds $15,000 from the General Fund to the Office of Civil Rights for Human Rights Day. Item 120, OCR3B1, adds $15,000 from the General Fund to the Office of Civil Rights to fund the city's Martin Luther King Jr. Unity Day celebration. Item 121, OCR4A2, adds $252,876 from the General Fund to the Office of Civil Rights for two full-time FDE positions to address capacity issues. Item 122, OCR5A1, cuts $52,404 from the General Fund from the Office of Civil Rights Budget, and delays hiring of new positions by three months. Item 123, OED1B1, adds $100,000 from the General Fund on a one-time basis to the Office of Economic Development to conduct an analysis of regional employment dependent on fossil fuels. Item 124 is a statement of legislative intent, OED2A2, requests that OED create strategies to connect developers with small businesses and service providers. Item 125, OED4B1, adds $75,000 from the General Fund on an ongoing basis to the Office of Economic Development to support high-road apprenticeships. Item 126, OED8B1, adds $116,291 from the admissions tax on an ongoing basis to the Office of Economic Development for one FDE film and music program lead position. Item 127, OED9B1, imposes a proviso on funding for the Creative Industry Policy Advisor position in the Office of Economic Development. Item 128 is a statement of legislative intent, OED10A2. It requests that the Office of Economic Development provide recommendations regarding the creation of a film commission. Item 129, OED12A1, cuts $65,000 from the General Fund on a one-time basis that was budgeted for a creative industry policy advisor position in the Office of Economic Development. Item 130, OED13A1, cuts $100,000 from the General Fund on an ongoing basis that was budgeted for business recruitment and retention consultant services in the Office of Economic Development. Item 131, which is OED19A2, adds $200,000 from the General Fund on a one-time basis to the Office of Economic Development to support redevelopment of the Seattle Vocational Institute. Item 132, OEO1A1, reduces the Office of Employee Ombuds Relocation Funds by $135,250 general fund on a one-time basis. Item 133, OYG1B1, adds $80,000 in general fund on an ongoing basis to OYG to consult, to allow for contracting with outside legal counsel, and impose a proviso. Item 134, OYG2A1, adds one FDE to OYG to create an operations manager position. Item 135, OIRA1B1, adds $375,000 of one-time money from the General Fund for a rapid response fund. Item 136, OIRA3A3, adds $50,000 on a one-time basis from the General Fund for deferred action for childhood arrivals and temporary protected status application scholarship funding. Item 137, OPA1B1, adds $80,000 from the General Fund on an ongoing basis to the Office of Professional Accountability to allow for contracting with outside legal counsel, and imposes a proviso. Item 138, OPCD1A2, provides $150,000 for a comprehensive plan outreach and engagement in OPCD, the Office of Planning and Community Development. Item 139, OPCD2B2, provides $500,000 in OPCD for their comprehensive plan environmental impact statement. Item 140, OPCD3B1, adds $35,000 from the General Fund to the Office of Planning and Community Development for a natural capital valuation study. Item 141, OPCD100A1, recommends passage of Council Bill 119676, OPCD Equitable Development Initiative Interfund Loan Extension. Item 142, OSC1B1, adds $136,291 from the General Fund, and 1.0 FDE Strategic Advisor, one position to the Office of Sustainability and Environment to support the Green New Deal Oversight Board and the Climate Action Interdepartmental Team, and it imposes a proviso. Item 143, OSC2D1, adds $540,000 from the Sweetened Beverage Tax to the Office of Sustainability and Environment, adds $735,000 from the Sweetened Beverage Tax to the Human Services Department, adds $300,000 from the Sweetened Beverage Tax to the Seattle Parks and Recreation, and adds $475,000 from the Sweetened Beverage Tax to the Department of Education and Early Learning, and cuts 2.275 million of Sweetened Beverage Tax monies from the Department of Neighborhoods, and imposes a proviso. Item 144 is a statement of legislative intent, OSC3A2, which requests that OSC, the Office of Sustainability and Environment, establish a high-road contracting standard for electrical contractors. And at this point, I'll hand over to Lisa.
I'm going to take you through the end, which is to item 182. So, we're almost there. Item 145 is a statement of legislative intent, SCL2A1. This requests that Seattle City Light reports on its strategic planning in accordance with Seattle's Green New Deal resolution. Item 146 is SCL100A1. This would pass Item 146 is SCL 100A1, this would pass Council Bill 119674, authorizing City Light to issue up to $250 million in revenue bonds to support its capital program. Item 147 is SDCI 4B1, this adds one FTE electrical inspector with a vehicle and $111,535 to enforce Washington state regulations related to electrical contractor licensing. Item 148 is SDCI 5A2, this adds $235,684 plus one FTE for a housing and zoning technician and one FTE for a code compliance analyst, to SDCI for tenant outreach and property owner and tenants' assistant group staffing. Item 149 is SDCI 7C1, this adds $230,000 one-time funding to SDCI to provide legal representation for Seattle renters facing eviction. Item 150 is SDCI 100A1, it is do-pass Council Bill 119669, SDCI's annual fee ordinance. Item 151 is SDHR 3A1, this cuts $149,412 for one FTE Strategic Advisor 1 position in Seattle Department of Human Resources for the City Leadership Academy. Item 152 is SDHR 101A1, this would pass Council Bill 119688, establishing an employee-giving program that would be conducted by a designated campaign administrator. Item 153 is SFD 1B1, this adds $600,000 in 2020 to the Seattle Fire Department to augment one recruit class. Item 154 is SIT 100A1, this passes Council Bill 119675, authorizing a one-year interfund loan of up to $2 million from the Information Technology Fund to the Cable Television Franchise Fund. Item 55 is a statement of legislative intent, SPD 1B1, this requests that the Seattle Police Department, in conjunction with other city departments, leads in an examination of the Charge by Officer Program. Item 156 is SPD 3A3, it adds $48,000 general fund and authority for one FTE Strategic Advisor position to the Seattle Police Department to work with data systems that record interactions with indigenous people and imposes a proviso. Item 157 is SPD 4B1, this adds $87,500 in 2020 to the Seattle Police Department to contract with an indigenous-led organization that can assist the city with its efforts to end the missing and murdered indigenous women and girls crisis, and imposes a proviso. Item 158 is SPD 6D1, this imposes provisos on Seattle Police Department appropriations related to additional training. Item 159 has been pulled for consideration later. Item 160 is a statement of legislative intent, SPD 9A2, this requests that the Seattle Police Department reports on a citywide asset loss approach. Item 161 is also a statement of legislative intent, it requests that the Seattle Police Department reports on compliance with copper wire laws. Item 162 is a statement of legislative intent, SPD 11A2, it requests that Seattle Police Department reports on the Community Service Officer Program. Item 163 is a statement of legislative intent, SPD 12A2, this requests that the Seattle Police Department report on its hiring and retention initiative. Item 164 is a statement of legislative intent, SPD 13A2, it requests that the Seattle Police Department report on sworn staff hiring. Item 165, SPD 50A1 reduces funding for the Seattle Police Department in order to subsidize recruit testing fee by $70,000 in 2020. Item 168 is SPD 51A1, this reduces SPD's budget for staff support of its recruitment and retention initiative by $75,000 in 2020. Item 167, SPD 52A1 reduces SPD's budget for its proposed sergeant training by $240,000 in 2020. Item 168 is SPR 2B2, this appropriates $150,000 of fund balance in Seattle Parks and Recreation to fund a feasibility study for an Aurora Licton Springs community center. It also amends the Community Center and Rehabilitation and Development CIP project. Item 169 is a statement of legislative intent, SPR 6A2, it requests a progress report from Seattle Parks and Recreation on the Green Seattle Partnership Program. Item 170 is SPR 7A1, it cuts $500,000 in Recreation Facilities Program from the Seattle Parks and Recreation, and backfills that with half a million dollars of King County Lovey funding, cut from the Play Area Renovations CIP project. Item 171 is SPR 81, this adds $150,000 to Seattle Parks and Recreation for American Indian and Alaska Native youth development through sports. Item 172, SPR 100A1 would pass CB Council Bill 119671, the Parks Fee Ordinance. Item 173 is SBU 1A2, this adds $30,000 to Seattle Public Utilities to improve shut-off notifications to multifamily building residents, and it pays for that by cutting $30,000 in an SBU reserve account. Item 174, SBU 100A1 would pass Council Bill 119672, Seattle Public Utilities 2020 to 2022 Solid Waste Rates. Then we will go through the budget legislation that would be approved by this consent package, the additional budget legislation. Item 175 is BLG 1A1, this would pass the Third Quarter 2019 Grant Accepted Ordinance, Council Bill 119667, authorizing the exceptions of $7 million of funding from non-city sources. Item 176 is BLG 2B2, this would amend and pass as amended, Council Bill 119668, the Third Quarter 2019 Supplemental Appropriations Ordinance, revising the 2019 budget. Item 177 is BLG 3A1, this basically approves putting into the record the mayor's 2020 proposed budget, which is Clerk File 314436. Item 178 is also a clerk file, this would approve filing Clerk File 314437, which is the mayor's proposed 2020 to 2025 capital improvements program. Item 178 is BLG 7A1, this passes Council Bill 119691, the Long Property Tax Ordinance. 118, BLG 8A1 passes Council Bill 119692, which is known as the Short Property Tax Ordinance. Item 181, BLG 9A1 would pass Council Bill 119673, authorizing the issuance of $65.3 million of limited tax government obligation bonds. Item 182 is BLG 10-A-1, which would pass Council Bill 119690, which repeals existing interfund loans. And that's it, Council Chair.
Well done. Thank you both. So at this point, do my colleagues have anything else you'd like to have removed from the consent package? Okay, seeing none, then we will move forward to adopt this consent package. And I think, Ally, you have already read once what's been removed. Do we need to read them again, so there's no further ads?
We do not. I'm happy to, though, if you--
Okay. No, I don't think so. I think there's only six. I think we've got it. So we've had those items removed. We're now going to consider the consent package as amended, and I would move that the committee recommends approval of the consent package as amended. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any further comments? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the committee recommending approval of the consent package as amended, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none. It's a unanimously passed consent package. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work on that. Okay, so now, council colleagues, I want to get a sense from you. The next thing we're going to be doing is turning to the items that we described that will be added to the adoption of this agenda. There are 11 of them, so it's not too long. But then we also have the removes. As I just spilled my water. Not a big problem here. Not much left, thank you. But I want to ask for your timing. What is your preference? Would you prefer to go through the ads and then take a break before we get to removals? Or do you want to power through? I definitely think we're going to need a break because I suspect that there's going to be some discussion. But we could either do it now, we could do it after the ads, and it's really up to you how you feel about it.
I'd suggest we power through as much as we can get through.
Okay, so we'll power through the ads and then we'll take another look at it. Fair enough? Okay, very good. So shall we just proceed with the ads, then, one at a time? This is classic up here. Great. And then the way we're going to do it is one item at a time, then I'm going to ask for a motion from the sponsor and a second for discussion, and then if there's any comments, then we'll decide to either add or not.
That sounds great. So I will go through the ads in the order that Ally listed them. Item 1 is CJ 962A1, which adds $222,600 of ongoing money from the general fund to the Human Services Department, youth diversion and education programs, and funds this with a $222,600 cut for recruitment and retention initiatives from SPD.
Very good. So Councilmember Swant, you're the sponsor. Would you like to introduce this and any introductory comments?
Sorry, I'm just making sure I have the right one.
Excuse me. Sorry to interrupt. I think before you begin the discussion, you need to make a motion to put the item on before you and have it seconded.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I'm just waiting to get a motion from the sponsor to do that.
So I move CBA CJ 962A1.
Second.
Very good. So the motion is now in front of us. Are there any comments? And I think the way we're going to do this is we'll have comments-- I'm sorry? Okay. We'll have comments first from the sponsor, anyone else, and then the sponsor can have two minutes to wrap up.
Thank you. This is a budget action that funds community-based restorative justice organizations who do heroic work, helping connect young people with positive enriching activities like the arts, political engagement, and education. These are diversion programs that are essential for preventing young people from being forced into entering the spiral of the criminal justice system, which is, in other words, the school-to-prison-to-pipeline-- sorry, school-to-prison-to-deportation pipeline. We've all talked about the impressive young people who have been involved in these organizations, and I've mentioned them many times. I won't mention the details of the programs again, but we know that every dollar spent on this organization is well-spent. And as I said, when my office talked to the community leaders of all these programs together, together they advocated for $522,600 between them for their important work. And thanks to the advocacy of the People's Budget Movement, including the activists leading the restorative justice work, we have been able to fight for and win $300,000 in the budget already for these programs, which I think the People's Budget Movement should celebrate because we got this because of our advocacy. But this budget amendment would fund the remaining $222,600. In this case, the funding source is reducing the amount of money in the police budget that is set aside for what the mayor is calling recruitment and retention initiatives. One of those initiatives that has been proposed by the mayor is to have over half a million dollars in funding is motivational speaker training for sergeants. Keep in mind, this is a police department that is under consent decree for accountability issues. Apparently, they think that sergeants need to be more encouraging when they send officers out on patrol and are spending over half-- want to spend half a million dollars on it. Compare the scrutiny that is put on the tiny budgets of human services and restorative justice programs to the cavalier way in which the mayor wants to spend $410 million on policing. How can there be more money available for motivational speaker training for sergeants, police sergeants, than for restorative justice, which is actually going to help our communities of color? It almost seems like the standard for whether money is well-spent in the police department is, you know, whether if it's flushed down the toilet, it will clog the pipes. If it's not going to clog the pipes, then it's a good use of money, flush away. But as far as the needs of society are concerned, we know that it's restorative justice programs that will make the difference, not more and more funding of the police department. I'm quite convinced that spending another-- funding these programs to the tune of another $222,600 will be better spent on the community than on motivational speaking for sergeants. And I really hope that council members will support this budget amendment, and let's make sure that we keep the amounts in perspective, you know, $410 million versus $500,000. It's just a drop in the bucket that we are asking for restorative justice.
Good. Other comments? Other comments? Sure, go ahead.
Just a question. Thank you, Councilmember Swant, for that great description of what we're trying to do. Just so I'm sort of clear, these organizations that we're sort of-- are trying to support from the mayor-- when the budget was proposed to us by the mayor, we put in a new package in our work $300,000 toward these, and so this is an additional $200 for a total of five-plus.
That's what she's asking for.
Yeah, that was the original amount that we came up with, the group.
Other comments? Chair? Yes.
I also want to add that in addition to the $300,000 that the chair's budget includes for diversion programs, this council-- this has become a topic of conversation in prior meetings, and so I wanted to get some details from the Seattle Office of Civil Rights. This council, in the budget process last year, created as a priority funding at the level of $1.08 million in funding for criminal justice reform programs. And some people have asked why that money wasn't allocated for 2019. The council made the decision to not allocate those dollars for 2019. We earmarked the funding for 2020 because we wanted to use the collaborative grant-making process. The collaborative grant-making process relies on community members to collectively develop the theory of change, investment outcomes, requests for proposals, and select grant recipients. The Office of Civil Rights has reported that it's working to get the grants out to organizations in the early part of 2020. SOCR is engaging with community members right now who are part of the grant process. And the types of projects that will be prioritized are projects that reduce harm caused by violence and mass incarceration by building effective, trauma-informed healing responses, projects that create restorative pathways for youth and young adults that interrupt the school-to-prison pipeline, projects that center healing, centered and trauma-informed youth development that simultaneously builds community with youth most impacted by the school-to-prison deportation pipeline, projects that encourage public engagement for better policing and safe communities, and support for those suffering from loss from the use of police force, and projects that build immigrant community capacity to secure alternatives to the justice system that avoid disproportionate immigration consequences and implement strategies to ensure these alternatives bring about individual and collective solutions for non-citizens and their families. So again, in addition to the $300,000 that the chair has included in her balanced budget package, we have this additional $1.08 million that SOCR will be distributing. And just a little bit more granularity on the process for the viewing public. The SOCR worked to recruit participants in the collaborative grant-making process during the month of October. They are launching the collaborative grant-making process this month. They are-- will be having capacity-building modules in November and December of 2019. The grant-making process and technical training will be happening in December. The RFP will go out in January 2020. They'll be rating proposals in February 2020 with site visits and interviews in February 2020, and funding decisions being made in February and March 2020 with dispersments in March 2020.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold.
Just to-- thanks for that, Councilmember Harold. Just to clarify, sort of, the point of that is-- is the point, then, that because of the work that SOCR is doing-- work that SOCR is doing, that Councilmember Swant's requests are likely to be funded to that tune because we have monies that were not spent last year? Is that sort of the point of your?
The point is that we have, let's see, nearly, yeah, a little bit over $1.1 million in the 2020 budget to fund diversion and criminal justice reform programs.
So just as we're thinking aloud, I was leaning toward supporting where Councilmember Swant is heading with this because this kind of restorative justice work makes all the sense in the world, and I think we can agree on that. I'm just trying to figure out how, from a budget standpoint, we can assure that's going to happen so that these organizations are funded. So if I voted no against Councilmember Swant's proposal, I'm just sort of trusting that the coffers will be loosened to fund these organizations.
Well, this is a budget decision we made last year for the 2020 budget. So I, and the granular detail that I just read from, I received from SOCR this morning. So this is a process that they're currently engaged in to fulfill this council's mandate to fund these programs in last year's budget.
And you said that the RFP is going to be issued in January?
Oh, let me pull it back up again because I just closed the email.
You don't have to read it again, though.
The RFP will be released in January, yes.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you for that.
So I'm going to be voting no on this because of the million dollars that we already put in from last year and the $300,000 that I put in earlier this week. Any other comments?
I want to.
Okay, you can close.
I have to say, I'm quite disappointed that we're hearing the same arguments that we had heard the last time we discussed this, last iteration last week, I think. And I had responded to that, and I'm going to respond again. And again, I just think it's really unfortunate. First of all, that grant opportunity is not opened up yet. I don't understand how anybody can make the argument, given the deep racism and, you know, the systemic problems we see with the police department, I don't know how any council member can make the argument that somehow if we fund these programs to the tune of $522,600, and then these programs also get a million dollars' worth next year, somehow that will be too much. I mean, seriously, that is not, we're not, and I made this point the last time, that we are not in any danger of overfunding programs for our community. That is not a danger we face. I don't, I don't agree with making this about granular detail and what the city had done last year. Seriously, the Seattle process is not more important than the desperate needs of the community. And if they get funding from both the sources, then great, that's great. I don't see there's any excuse for not funding this. And last but not least, make the police department apply for a grant. Why are you making the community apply for grants?
Okay, any further comments? Those in favor of approving item CJ 962A1, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Sorry, my fault.
All right, so what's just happened here?
I got confused.
Okay, I'm going, it hasn't, I'm going to ask for a recall on this vote, a revote.
Recall, really.
Okay, really. So those in favor of approving item CJ 962A1, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Just call them out. How many were that? One, two, three, four.
Four? Okay, those opposed, raise your hand and say no? No? One, two, three, four? So it fails with a 4-4 vote. Okay. Okay. On the next one, Tom, will you please read? I don't know.
I want to say one thing, and that is, it's my understanding, and Councilmember Herbo, thanks for your description, I'm sure these groups will be funded to the tune of what Councilmember Swant's trying to go. And there might be a principle involved that we're still preserving a police department budget. I get that argument. But if I'm understanding your description correctly, we're pretty much doubling down on our restorative justice efforts in this budget for next year. So I feel good about that, even though it failed, so, okay. Let's just proceed.
All right, Tom, would you please read item number two?
Item two is DEAL 10A1, which requests that the Department of Education and Early Learning report on data collection, desegregation, and usage.
Very good. Councilmember Pacheco, Councilmember Pacheco, would you like to move this as the sponsor?
Sure. I move, let's see, here's my notes. CBA DEEL 10-A-1 requests that DEAL report on data collection, desegregation, and usage.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So it has been moved by Councilmember Pacheco. Council, Council President Harrell seconded. So would you like to proceed with comments?
Sure. Colleagues, this is a statement of legislative intent that will further the department and the council's objective to focusing on serving students most likely to experience achievement gaps, and the FEP levy currently reflects that priority. However, my office has also received questions about the data that informs DEAL's investment strategies and organizations funded. The goals of this slide are to provide more clarity on DEAL's disaggregated data practices, how data is used to inform the creation of funding opportunities and allocations, and how DEAL ensures that students most likely to experience achievement gaps are prioritized. Given how complicated it can be for organizations to track city funding priorities and outcomes, it is worthwhile to provide more information on how decisions are made and who is truly being served.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, well, let's just move on to a vote then. Those in favor of approving item DEEL 10-A-1, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Those opposed, say no, raise your hand.
I said aye. Sorry.
Okay.
Chair, can we, can I ask? It's very confusing as to when we can lower our hand and when we should raise them, so, because we're waiting on staff to take a tally. So if we can get a very clear verbal signal of when you are done counting our hands, I think that would be helpful to us and to the viewing public as well.
Great. So shall we have Ali? Did Ali give us a signal when you got the, when you got the count? All right, very good. All right, there is a lot happening here. Okay, Tom, would you read in item number three?
Item three is HOM 914A1, which adds $8,395,000 of ongoing money from the General Fund to the Human Services Department to create 14 tiny home villages. Cuts $8,395,000 of ongoing money from the General Fund across multiple departments to discontinue the navigation team and aggregates 30 FTE positions and imposes a proviso.
Not unless you want to. Good. This is Councilmember Swant. Would you like to put the motion in front of us?
I move CBA HOM, CBA number HOM 914A1.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, hearing none. This fails for a second. All right, item number four. Item number four.
I just want to explain to members of the public what just happened. We didn't even get a second to discuss it.
Item number four. Please, Tom?
Item four is a statement of legislative intent, OED 15A2, which requests that the Office of Economic Development form a search committee to provide recommendations for hiring a creative industry director.
Councilmember Swant, do you want to put this in front of us?
I move CBA number OED 15A2.
Do we have a second? I'll second this.
This, this is a statement of legislative intent, and for members of the public, it is, that means that it is not about whether we should spend a certain amount of money on this or that. It's a question of sort of political direction for the departments that function under the mayor's direction. So this statement of legislative intent requests that the Office of Economic Development work with workers and their unions in the film and music industry when selecting a director for the city department that is in charge of supporting this industry. So in other words, it's about giving workers and their labor unions a say in the, you know, who should be appointed as a director. This should not be controversial. This should be a very basic requirement. Unfortunately, the mayor's office has attempted to punish the workers in the industry for public, for daring to publicly criticize her. And I'm not going to go into the details because we did this the last time, but just very quickly, the workers and the, in the coalition of unions, published an opinion editorial in The Stranger's Log where they objected to how they were being shut out. And the response from the mayor, instead of, you know, including them, was to further sideline them and send them a letter saying, well, you know, because you did this, because you publicly criticized us, we're not going to invite you to this retreat where the discussion was going to happen. And I think the community needs to, whether you're unionized or not yourself, we should stand with the workers and the unions to support their very, very reasonable, minimal demand to have a say in the creative industry's director. So it simply, this statement of legislative intent simply makes the request to the department to work with the unions because hiring this director is under the mayor's authority. It's not under the council's authority. And if the mayor refuses to accept this, then we will need to continue to organize in the new year to ensure that the worker's voice is respected. And I hope the council members will support this.
Are there any further comments? Councilmember Herbo.
A question first, and then a comment. This is identified as a new item, but it also notes that a number of us sponsored it, and I believe, I remember talking about it in the last budget meeting. Can, is there something new in it that was not in the earlier version?
No, the, the new version number indicates the cosponsors that were added during discussion at last week's committee meeting on Wednesday. However, it was not added to the revised balancing package, and so this is an opportunity to add it to the council's budget.
And it does, there's no financial impact?
There is no financial impact.
And then Councilmember Herbo, you're right. We did talk about this, and we did have a number of councilmembers support it.
And I believe there were six councilmembers supported it.
Indeed. So as mentioned, I strongly support this measure. And for folks in the audience who missed it, the other items related to the film industry are, were in the consent package. So that relates to the proviso on the policy position under this one and the expectation that the department, the departments work with the film industry in developing a job description for that position is also included, as well as a request for a report back on the creation of a film commission for the purposes of the public record. And because I've been asked by members of the press about this, I also received the controversial email from the Arts Office Director. I, I did not read it as a blanket disinvitation to participate in discussions moving forward. The director, as well as the Music and Arts Commission co-chairs, disinvited folks to one particular event, that is, the commission's retreat. Simultaneously, in that, in that same message, the director indicated that he intended them to be included in, one, future conversations about the Film Task Force and the work around the Australia Report recommendations, and, two, the public meeting proposed for 11/22. Further, our actions today, both as it relates to the director, the director position, as well as the policy position, ensures your ongoing communication and participation, and we will be monitoring that.
Very good. Other comments? So anything else, councilmembers, that brought this up? Do you have any closing comment on this?
No, I hope we can move forward. And I, and I think that this kind of pressure is important, both from the People's Budget Movement and the unions that have advocated for it. I wanted to thank leading members of union like Doug Duma, who have helped advocate for this. And I do think we need to keep the pressure up on this. This is a very minimal requirement.
Okay. Then let's move forward for a vote. Those in favor of approving item OED 15A2, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, this measure passes. Thank you. Move on to item number five, please. Now, this is Councilmember O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item five is a statement of legislative intent, SCL 900A1, requests that Seattle City Light, STOT, and OSC report on transitions to complete electrification of all transportation and buildings in Seattle.
Very good. Thank you. Would the sponsor here like to put this in front of us?
Madam Chair, we need to move the legislation.
Would you like to move it?
I'll move the legislation.
Great. Do we have a second? I'll second it.
Colleagues, brief reminder, we passed the Green New Deal for Seattle resolution back in August. That committed us to be in, the city to be in climate pollution-free by the year 2030. The two biggest sectors of pollution in the city, the first is our transportation and the second is our buildings. We have the technology today to figure out how to move all of our transportation, local transportation, to electrified vehicles. Similarly, we also are working on how to electrify all new and existing buildings. This slide would ask Seattle City Light, working with other departments, to do some analysis on what that would take. There was a previous slide that was in there. I worked with the, the heads at Seattle City Light and Office of Sustainability and Environment, and they suggested some refined language. So what you have in front of us today is just refining the language slightly to, to acknowledge some changes that were requested from the departments.
Very good. Any other comments? All right, so it has been moved by Councilmember O'Brien, seconded by me. Those in favor of approving this item, SCL 900A1, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any, any opposed? Okay, the measure passes. Let's move on to item number six.
Item six is SDCI 2B1, which is a proviso on $63,000 in Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections for updates to green building standards.
Very good. Councilmember Pacheco, would you like to move this item?
I move CBA SDCI 2B-1, provides on $63,000 in SDCI for updates to the green building standards.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comments? Councilmember Pacheco.
So colleagues, our various green building standards and green building incentive programs have long been, and bless you, in need of a comprehensive review and update. This amendment would provide for half an FTE from SDCI's co-development team to carry out the work of reviewing these programs and making recommendations to improve them. It also requests that as a specific piece of that review, SDCI make recommendations for how these programs can incentivize the use of cross-laminated timber in new construction, an area the United States has been far behind on, and the city of Seattle can be a leader on. After comments made by Councilmember O'Brien, we've also included language about the environmental sustainability standards, and so I hope to have your support.
Very good. Councilmember O'Brien, do you want to add anything?
I really appreciate adding the language specifically that says that it's anticipated that proposed updates could include incentives to use FSC-certified cross-laminated timber as a construction material. I think the cross-laminated timber holds a lot of promise, and it's just important that where we source that timber from is from a sustainable source as opposed to poor, poor forestry practices. So we really appreciate that support. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Any other comments? Those in favor of approving item number six, which is SDCI 2-B-1, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, this measure, motion passes. It's approved. All right, item number seven.
Item seven is SDCI 3A1, which requests that the Office of Planning and Community Development and the Seattle Department of Construction Inspections prepare a proposal to limit siting of new fossil fuel production and storage facilities.
Good. Councilmember O'Brien, would you like to move this item?
I will move this item.
Very good. I'll second.
Thank you. Colleagues, consistent with our work on the Green New Deal that I mentioned a moment ago, I believe that Seattle needs to be very clear that, that new fossil fuel projects are not welcome in our city. We passed a, as part of our comprehensive plan docketing language a few months ago that asks for proposals to come back next year for future council to adopt those. This work asks the Department's Office of Planning and Community Development and Seattle Department of Construction Inspections to prepare a proposal for how they would actually implement such a thing. We had heard some concerns about capacity to do the work, but in my discussions with central staff, we believe that this work could be accomplished under some existing work that's already funded and going on, including the industrial lands work, which would be a logical place, or shoreline work, which is also two bodies of work that will be happening next year. So despite some questions from the executive, I still think it's really important that the council adopt this and include it, and I think there's a reasonable path for them to do this work next year.
Great, thanks. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on, move to vote. Those in favor of approving item number SDCI 3-A-1, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? All right. All right, the motion carries, and this item number SDCI 3-A-1 is approved. So the next item, please.
Item eight is SDCI 6B1, which adds $607,000 from the General Fund on an ongoing basis to SDCI for renter organizing and outreach, and offsets that addition with a reduction to incentive funding in the Seattle Police Department for officer hiring.
Great. Councilmember Sawant, would you like to move this item?
I move CBA number SDCI 6B1.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so please proceed with comments.
This budget amendment would fund the expansion of crucial renter organizing and outreach. We know that across the country, there is a deep housing crisis, as real estate speculation has driven up rents and other housing costs, which has led to the economic evictions of renters out of their homes and in their communities. And those who remain in their rental homes only face greater and greater financial strengths, strains. However, across the country, renters are also beginning to fight back, getting organized against evictions and for rent control, including in Seattle. Renters have organized tenants' associations in their buildings and have actually achieved results. The, some of the renter organizing efforts that my office has collaborated with is the Kenton Building in North, North Capitol Hill, the Chateau Building in the Central District, which are, you know, composed of just ordinary people who decided to get organized as a tenants' union in their building and fight against their corporate developer, managed, and have managed to win victories, which otherwise would not have been possible. The Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections has funds that were won through the People's Budget Movement in previous years to fund tenant organizing and outreach. But this fund, while it is being made use of in a very good way, are totally insufficient to meet the needs of the renters, who make half of the city's population. This is a dire need, and the city, if the city council is representing ordinary people, then we have to keep in mind, half of the ordinary people we are representing are renters. And so this budget amendment would add to those meager funds to support the following areas of work. B, Seattle, which is an organization that has organized many Know Your Rights bootcamps for renters, which we have collaborated with on and, and have received tremendous response from tenants. The Tenants Union of Washington State, which operates a call line for renters, but besides that, has also helped tenant associations forming in their buildings. And often landlords who abuse one tenant, abuse, they abuse many, it's a practice, they don't just abuse one tenant somewhere sometime. And when those tenants get organized, they can fight for their rights. This would also fund LGBTQ allyship, which is supporting LGBTQ seniors who are renters, and the Washington Community Action Network, which has successfully advocated for eviction reforms, and who use a lot of their resources on a shoestring budget to actually door-knock on renters' doors and help them become part of a movement to fight for their own rights. As you know, Washington Community Action Network just ran a successful ballot initiative, which they won in federal way, passing Just Cause Eviction Protection. So that's a concrete example of what can be done when you organize renters. And all of this is in the context of a giant power imbalance between landlords and renters. But when renters are organized, you can shift that power imbalance in favor of renters. And this budget amendment will continue to fund that work, and I hope council members will support it. To generate the funds, this budget amendment would reduce funding that the mayor allocated to the police department for extra hiring bonuses for police officers. This is not wages, you know, current wages for police officers. It is bonuses and incentives for new hires, such as officers who transfer into this city. The reality is, how the housing security insecurity that exists right now, that can be addressed by creating and funding more renter organizing, will have a much bigger impact on public safety, positive impact on public safety. Reduce homelessness, as, will have a much bigger impact on reducing crime and, and will improve public safety much more effectively than throwing even more money at repressive policing. And this is a side point, but I just wanted to say this, there is a real shortage of social workers in Seattle, because their wages are so low, and they barely make it. And so why is the city going to give hiring bonuses to police officers? Why not give hiring bonuses to social workers if you want to give hiring bonus to somebody?
Further comments? Well, then, no further comments than those in favor of approving item number SDCI 6B1. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those, those opposed, vote no, raise your hand, say no.
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, so the motion fails, and this council bill, our council actions, SDCI 6B1 is not approved. All right, the next item is SDCI 900B1. Tom, would you like to read that in?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item nine, SDCI 900B1, adds $304,522 ongoing from the General Fund to SDCI for eviction, legal defense, and reduces SDOT congestion pricing outreach funding by a like amount.
Councilmember Sawant, would you like to put this in front of us with a motion?
I move CBA number SDCI 900B1.
Do I have a second? Not hearing a second? Okay, so the motion fails. All right, moving on to SDCI 901A1.
Item 10, SDCI 901A1, adds $60,000 from the General Fund on an ongoing basis to SDCI for renter organizing and outreach, delay, delays hiring of administrative assistant at SPD, and reduces congestion pricing outreach funding by a like amount.
Okay. Councilmember Sawant, would you like to move this item?
Oh, this one's mine.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Herbold, sorry.
Thank you. I move new CBA SDCI 901A1.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Herbold, would you like to speak to it first?
Thank you. So this budget action provides an admittedly much smaller amount than proposed by Councilmember Sawant, but it provides $60,000 in funding to SDCI to contract with community-based organizations for renter outreach, education, and organizing. I want to thank Councilmember O'Brien for working with me to identify an appropriate-sized cut for the congestion pricing budget item. This is a cut of $25,000 that allows the work to continue, and it's a cut that Councilmember O'Brien worked with the Office of Sustainability and Environment to identify. The other cut is $35,000, and this is to delay an administrative position, an administrative assistant position in SPD related to the recruitment and retention item that we've been discussing in other items, but it just delays that person in SPD by one quarter.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember O'Brien, do you have any additions?
No, just appreciate the collaboration on this, and appreciate the departments helping to find a little bit of wiggle room. I know that was a tough one for them, but it, it should help do some good advocacy.
Councilmember Sawant?
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold, and I really want to credit the People's Budget Movement and the renter organizing activists who have pushed for this, because sometimes we will not win everything we're, we're fighting for, but whatever we win is because we get organized. So I really wanted to appreciate all of you, and, you know, the fight will go on.
Comments? Councilmember Pacheco? Oh, okay, very good. Then those in favor of approving item SDCI 901A1, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, and this item, SDCI 901A1, is approved. All right, so we have the last ad item. Tom, would you like to read that in?
Okay. So, item 11 is a statement of legislative intent, SDOT 915A1. It requests that the Seattle Department of Transportation develop a plan to make all public transit in Seattle free to ride.
Great. Councilmember Sawant, may I have a motion from you?
I move SDOT 9, CBA number SDOT 915A1.
Second.
And seconded, comments, please.
So one of the proposals in the Green New Deal resolution that was passed unanimously by the council is calling for a massive expansion of public transit and making it free for all to use. It is not possible to substantially reduce the number of cars on the road and the time people end up spending in their cars unless we invest in making other forms of transportation effective, efficient, and affordable. So all of that needs to happen. Altogether, you know, we need more stops, more, greater frequency, and greater density of routes, but we also need the public transit to be free. I mean, that is like the bare minimum we need if we are going to fight climate change. And I think in terms of the consciousness and the willingness of the vast majority of ordinary people who do end up driving because they're pushed out of the city, farther and farther away from their jobs, they actually want to move to public transit, but this or that or the other obstacle is in their way. And making it free obviously will be a big step forward. So this statement of legislative intent, again, it's not about putting money here or there, it's, it's simply asking the Department of Transportation to make funding recommendations for how to make all transit in Seattle free for everybody to use, no matter who you are. So the options would include requiring employers to supply ORCA cards to all employees, taxing big business to fund ORCA cards for all, coming to an intergovernmental agreement to make Seattle a right-free zone. All of these, you know, should be explored by the study. And the reality is, if you look at the amount of the revenues that is being for running the public transit is accounted for by rider fares, that is now a minority of the revenue to operate the public transit program. So just mathematically, it should not be impossible to make transit free for all. And this is a study I think that should happen very quickly.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Thanks for your work on this, Councilmember Sawant. I am very supportive of moving on the path towards free transit for everyone. I want to just let everyone know that Thurston County recently decided to make their transit system free, starting in January 1st. They have a smaller transit system than King County, but they had done the analysis of the cost to upgrade their fare collection system and decided that to spend that money to collect fares and the money they would actually receive in collecting it, didn't make sense to move forward and switch to the system. We have a much more complex system, and Seattle is just a piece of King County Metro's work. But I think absolutely this is the direction we should be moving and that other cities are moving. And I think this is a really, a good opportunity for us to start doing some research and putting some ideas out there to figure out what next steps could be.
Great. Other comments? Please.
I, I agree with both Councilmember Sawant and O'Brien's comments on here. I think that this is a sort of no harm, no foul benefits could be gained, kind of a statement of legislative intent. I think with the, the added complexity, obviously, of I-976 and those legal challenges are present, but nonetheless, I think it provides us an opportunity to do some legwork around what a transit system that is free to the public could truly look like if it existed. So I think we all sort of recognize the level of pragmatism around the realities of 976 and the devastating impact that that has on our existing transit system, which is deeply subsidized, not free, but I think, you know, visioning towards a, a long-term effort towards ultimately having free transit is a, a good thing, a good thing for our city and for the people who live and work in our city. So definitely support the spirit of this with the acknowledgement that the work in this space will be significantly impacted based on our success or lack thereof around 976.
Yeah, I, thank you, thank you for that. I would, I would just like to say that I think it's a great goal. I think it's unlikely at this point, because our transportation system is funded by roughly 25% by what we pay, pay by ORCA cards or otherwise. But saying that, and I don't see a path forward at this point, but we might as well ask, and ask SDOT to do a reasonable study. My concern frankly is that it's, we're requesting them to do something large without providing them any assistance financially to do this. But at this point, if we don't make the ask, we're not going to get the answer, so I'm going to support this. Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving this final item here, SDOT 915A1, vote aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed? Vote no? All right, so that motion carries, and CBA SDOT 915A1 is approved. Thank you very much to my colleagues. Now, it's, I'm looking at the clock. It's 12:24, but we actually only have six items left. So, okay. That sounds, that sounds unanimous to me. And so the items that we've removed from the consent package are now the ones that we are going to consider. And the way it works, and it's complicated, is that I'm going to make a motion and request a second to approve the original CBA. So that original will be in front of us, and I'm going to ask those of you who have a substitution to have a motion and a second to substitute it. Then we will discuss it, then we have to unwind the whole thing if it passes, if it doesn't pass. But I think with everybody's help, we can get through this, and that Amelia will be pleased with me. So the first item of business, council central staff, Amy, would you read this one in? I see it as slide CBO 2B1.
Sure. And Chair Backshe, I just want to note that because I'm going to be reading in and trying to help keep track of the process here, my colleague Lisa will be giving you the thumbs up when the votes have been
Great, very good.
Recorded properly.
Okay, thank you.
So the first item removed from the consent package is slide CBO 2B1, that would request that CBO report on steps, timeline, and funding to collect high earners municipal income tax, to collect a high earners municipal income tax.
Very good. And this is Councilmember Herbold's, but I'm going to move approval of this initial council CBA slide, CBO 2B1, as included in the consent package.
Second.
Need a second, thank you. I have no additional comments, and is there a motion and second to substitute a new council budget action for this item? And here I pass it over to Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you, and I'm looking for my notes. I can't find them, so I'm just going to wing it. I move to substitute CBO 900-A-1.
I'll second, yeah. Good. So it's moved and seconded to substitute this council, the slide, CBO 900A1, A1, and is presented. We have a second. Council central staff, are you going to describe the difference here?
Yeah, so what I'll be doing, council members, as we move through this process, is once the motion to substitute has been moved and seconded, I will briefly describe what the substitute does, or how it differs from the original item that was before you. And just know that if you vote yes on the motion to substitute, you now have that item before you, and the original item is no longer before you. So I just want to, I may say that multiple times, if you vote yes on the substitute, the original item is no longer before you.
Great.
And then you will vote on the substitute option after any discussion.
Very good. Thank you.
So the substitute, CBO 900A1, also requests a similar report. This version or option removes language about providing the report within 30 days of the ruling, and instead asks for the report by March 31st, 2020. It continues to include language about an alternative report if the ruling is not in our favor, but it still asks for this report on March 30th.
Great. Councilmember Herbold, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any other comments? Those in favor of the motion to substitute, vote aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, the motion passes, and the new slide is before us. Are there any further comments? Okay, seeing none, those in favor of the committee recommending approval of item number CBO 900A1, raise your hand again and vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed? Very good, the motion passes, and this item number, CBO 900A1, is approved. Okay, thanks. Okay, one down, five to go.
The next item that was removed from the consent package is slide CJ 21A2. This requests that the executive departments report on reentry recommendations regarding increasing economic opportunities.
Very good. So this is another slide, and CJ 21A2 is before us, and I would like to move approval of this.
Okay.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, is, so we've got a motion now to substitute, and this is Councilmember Gonzalez. Do you have, would you like to move your substitute?
Yes. I will move to substitute CBA number CJ 921-A-1 for CBA CJ-21-A-2.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Council central staff, would you like to describe the differences?
This substitution is very similar to the original, but it corrects a type of This substitution is very similar to the original, but it corrects a typographical area error, excuse me, by replacing formerly with formerly.
I'd like to discuss this at length.
Okay, well, those in favor of the motion to substitute, vote aye, raise your hand.
Aye. Are you guys voting?
Yes. All we're doing here is putting it in front of us. Those opposed, vote no. We're good. All right, so that motion passes and the new substitute, CJ 921A1, as corrected, is now before us. Any further comments? Okay. So we're now going to vote again on this substitute. Those in favor, vote aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. None opposed? So the motion passes and we're good on this one. All right, it is approved.
The next item removed from the consent package is CBA HOM 3-B3. This would add $1.2 million, including $6,000 of general fund, of one-time funding to HSD to expand tiny home villages and imposes two provisos.
Very good. So I'm going to move approval of the initial HOM 3-8-2.
Second.
Okay. I have no further comments. Is there a motion that you would like to make and second to substitute the new action?
Right.
Wait, can we get a description of the difference?
I think the underlying was HOM 3-B3.
What?
So there was one that was removed here.
Yeah, it modifies just the proviso language.
So let's
But I have to move it first.
So, Ally, I think we are on HOM 3-B2.
3-B3.
It's 3-B3. There's a, another typographical error.
I will second 3-B3.
Thank you very much. Okay, so it has been moved and seconded. It is now in front of us. So do we have a motion and a second to substitute?
I move to substitute CBA HOM-1, sorry, 903-B1 for CBA HOM-3-B3.
I'll second.
So maybe there, is there another error here? Because I've got a different substitution number.
Councilmembers, I believe that Councilmember Sawant has a slightly revised version of the substitute CBA that was distributed to you this morning, and I will
Sorry, I forgot to hand
So she will, she will hand that out now. I believe that the CBA number on that piece of paper may say HOM 903A1, but it should say 903B1.
It does say A1, and thank you for clarifying, Ally, and thank you for reminding me to
This is the same.
So
It's the same number.
It does say the same number.
Should be E. But it's the new description.
We were generating a new version, or excuse me, a new option on the fly. It should read HOM 903B1.
Echo, E is in echo.
B is in boy.
903 Bravo 1. Does it, and that's the new one? Okay.
Sounds like a pilot talking.
Really? Okay. So what we have here is a, a new substitute, 903B1, which has been moved, seconded, Councilmember O'Brien. And would, would you like to present this, Ally?
Sure. So the original version added about $1.2 million for tiny home villages and imposed provisos on that funding. This new options, option modifies the proviso by removing the language that referred to, limiting it to use for tiny home shelters or enhanced villages, and also removes the language prioritizing these tiny home spaces for individuals referred by the lead program, by the NAV team and other diversion programs.
Okay. Councilmember Sawant, would you like to speak to it?
Yes.
Oh, wait a second. I think I have to actually, we've got it moved in front of us. So we just have to have a motion to substitute this vote, so that's in front of us.
That was made.
You had the motion to substitute and seconded, so you can have the discussion prior. So again, if you vote yes on the motion to substitute, the original, original version is off the table, and this new version with this new proviso language is, is what you're considering.
Okay.
I have another process question, if I may.
Please.
So for the items that we are voting to substitute, we, at the beginning, asked to pull those, correct?
Correct.
But we voted in favor of, in the consent package, did we not?
You did not. There was, there are two actions in the chair's revised balancing package that added funding for tiny home village. One was sponsored by Councilmember Mosqueta. That was in the consent package. That was home to C1, I believe. This is the second action that adds money for tiny home village that was removed from the consent package.
So we, we removed it, and this change reduces the flexibility to use it either for tiny home villages or enhanced shelter. And it also eliminates the language about prioritizing the spaces created for NAV team and lead clients.
Correct.
Correct. Councilmember Sawant, would you like to speak to this first?
Yes. And just for councilmembers, the, the handout with the new language, just wanted to make sure there's no confusion. As far as the funding of the tiny house villages, there's no, there's no change. We obviously want all that funding. It's on the flip side of what I handed out is the new language for the proviso, and that's the only, changes are only in the proviso language, not in the funding. So I just wanted to speak to that. The, so we have, you know, just in terms of also the members of the public and the people's budget movement who are here, we have, this has been tremendous. I mean, this is, what we have won is not enough, but we have won just over $2 million to expand tiny house villages, which is absolutely fantastic for what we have done. It's a testament to our movement. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Mosqueta, who's on family leave but who has supported us, and also the rest of the council for also supporting us to come this far. But we, we, we had an original budget amendment that the money could be used only to expand tiny house villages. And the testimony that we have heard in committee after committee after committee in the last two, three months has been about tiny house villages. The feedback we have received from on-the-ground service providers, including through REACH, tells us over and over again that people want tiny house villages precisely because they get privacy, they're able to store their belongings. And while I don't want, I don't want to pit enhanced shelters against tiny house villages because enhanced shelters also provide an important service, but I don't think that the funding for enhanced shelters should come at the expense of tiny house villages because we have seen such a dramatic improvement in people's lives when they're homeless and they're able to have a tiny house. Unfortunately, in the latest draft of the balancing package that was presented, that language has been changed by the budget chair, and you know, she can speak to it. The language has been changed in the proviso to say that the monies for tiny house villages are enhanced shelter. And as I said, enhanced shelters can be good for some people, but I don't think it should come at the expense of tiny house villages. The reason tiny house villages have the best results is because, including best transitions for permanent housing, is because they provide privacy. And I don't think that people who are housed and take privacy for granted should be telling people who are homeless that they can't have privacy. And I think that given the overwhelming testimony that we have heard, and I can tell you, councilmembers, many of you, actually, none of you were there in the committee meetings that I held where we had now over 100 people testifying, including people who are providing the tiny house services and people who have experienced the benefits of tiny house villages and then transition to permanent housing. We have not had one of those over 100 people say, "I could do with a tiny house or enhanced shelter." There was never once happened. It was always 100% for tiny house villages. And I don't think that we should confuse the issue by putting that in place. So the language, the new language, you know, makes it clear that it is solely to establish and operate, the new monies are solely to establish and operate new tiny house villages. So that's one, there's two provisos, and there's just, I'm just providing a change on one of the provisos.
I am going to vote against this for one important point, and that is, I want to support the tiny home villages, and I don't want to restrict things that we could do quickly in the first or second quarter. I am more interested right now in making sure that people have places where they can go, where they're warm, where they have the services and the case management. We know how hard it is to cite these tiny home villages. Now, that's, that's shameful. We ought to be able to do it much more quickly. I don't want to leave any option out. If I had my preference and all things were equal, I'd say, let's make sure that we've got many, many spaces where we can put the villages in any neighborhood across the city. We don't have that. So I am voting no simply for the reason to make sure that people have a place and a roof and 24/7 where they can sleep. Further comments?
Sure. I just want to clarify that a vote no is not a vote opposing the $1.2 million for either expanded tiny house villages in addition to the $600,000 that Councilmember Mosqueta added. It's, a vote no is, is, is not to oppose funding for that purpose. We will still have the opportunity, I believe, to vote under the, what we're, what we are, what Councilmember Sawant is proposing to replace that item with. So we are still intending to, regardless of what happens with this vote, vote on the $1.2 million for tiny house villages with the flexibility of allowing for an enhanced shelter. As, I want to just quickly speak to the provisos as it relates to the proviso not prioritizing spaces for people referred by the NAV team or by lead. I just want to highlight that the city auditor has repeatedly said that the city needs to be prioritizing the population of people who are being moved by our navigation team, prioritizing locations for those people to go. Not only provides a safe place for people to go, but it also increases the likelihood that people will come inside. Tiny house villages are one of the most popular locations for people to go to from outside. Enhanced shelters are another one of the, the most popular locations for people to go to from outside. Likewise, the outcomes from enhanced shelter and, and tiny house villages to permanent housing are very, very high. And so for those reasons, I too would like to preserve the flexibility in the original measure to allow for these funds as originally proposed by Councilmember Sawant to be used for either tiny house villages or enhanced shelters without, while also including the language that we prioritize these new spaces for people coming in from outside through both the lead program and through the navigation team, consistent with the city auditor's recommendations. I would be interested in working with the, with Councilmember Sawant in her recommended substitute of her original proposal to think about whether or not there might be, in, in recognition of Councilmember Bagshaw's point, that sometimes these tiny house villages take a lot of time to cite. And there may be an opportunity to do an enhanced shelter at a date certain, where we get to a point in 2020 where we still don't have a date certain for expanded tiny house villages. So we might, perhaps we could meet in the middle and create a mid-year mark as a goal for the executive to prioritize these funds for tiny house villages. And if that is not successful, if they have a date certain for the expansion of our enhanced shelter system, we could use those funds for that.
Great. Thank you. Further comments?
I'd like to toss out some, yeah, and just some, some of the points that came up. I appreciate Councilmember Herbold. Of course, absolutely happy to work with you on, you know, if we, if we can't find a way to, if you can't find a way to support this right now, of course, I want to make sure we keep working together on these things. But just to clarify some of the things, as far as the prioritization of lead, that is the law enforcement assisted diversion program, referrals from that and the NAV team, just to clarify, the original budget action still includes the prioritization language of that. It's, all I did was remove it from the proviso, and I'll explain why I did that. But just to clarify, the budget action description that I just handed out, which is the updated one, which we are going to vote on, it says, "The total funding is estimated to support a single tiny home villages that will prioritize referrals from the NAV team, law enforcement assisted diversion program, and Seattle Municipal Court." So that is not going away. I'm just removing the absolute requirement, which a proviso is. And the reason we did that, we weren't originally planning to do that, but we had advocates like Allison Isinger just point to us this morning that the proviso language, as was introduced by Councilmember Bagshaw, it, it could potentially, I mean, I'm not the expert on this, but I'm relaying what, what was told to my office, could be a real problem if it forces people who have addiction issues that are, that are sent to clean and sober villages. In other words, we, the real flexibility we want is not between enhanced shelters and tiny house villages, and I'll come to that in a second. The real flexibility we want is to make sure there are appropriate matches between homeless individuals and their specific conditions and the tiny house villages that they're going to, rather than trying to just confuse the whole thing and having a clean and sober village confront a question of whether they're going to take a person who will face addiction issues simply because, not, not to discriminate against people who are facing the opioid crisis, but there are specific kind of services that are needed for the people who face those problems, and that particular tiny house village may not be equipped with that. And it wasn't clear with the new proviso how that would be ensured. The second thing is, as far as the, the flexibility that you all are talking about between enhanced shelters and tiny house villages, honestly, I'll be honest, the only people I've heard advocating for enhanced shelters are, are elected officials. I have never heard homeless people, and I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic, I'm, this is the honest truth, I've never heard homeless individuals themselves say, "I want enhanced shelters." And I think a big reason for that is that it doesn't work when you don't have privacy. And I think that's a basic human right. And as far as the tiny house villages taking time, I'm, I'm happy to meet you midway, midway next year, but I think we can speed up the building of the tiny house villages. There is an outstanding bill from my office, which, which is on the council calendar, to, to expand the sighting of the tiny house villages. I would have been happy to bring it forward now, but it wasn't suitable for the budget chair, but I, but I would like to bring it forward early, very early next year and see how fast we can do this, but feeling that, of course, I want to make sure we have as much shelter as possible of all kinds.
Amen, sister. That's what I'm looking for, too, is as much shelter as we can possibly get of all kinds. So if there's not further, any comments at this point, so I'll see if I've got this right, that those in favor of the motion to substitute CBA HOM 903B1 for HOM 383, raise your hand and say aye.
3B3.
3B3.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
And I just, I'll just remind the council, if you vote no on the motion to substitute, the original item will be before you, so you'll have an opportunity to vote on that.
Great. All right, are we now clear?
Before
Please, go ahead.
I just want to, in addition to wanting to find some middle ground on the enhanced shelter versus the tiny home villages, I, I do agree with Councilmember Sawant's point about the proviso potentially being a barrier that is unintended, and appreciate her pointing out that, that the language about the prioritization is already in the, the budget action description. I am thinking I'm going to vote no on the substitute, but I hope that the sponsor brings it back on Monday with the proviso language lifted, because I, I agree, I don't, I don't, I don't want that.
I'm happy to do that, yeah. Okay. Very good. So we're back to the substitute, and if we move those, if we move this in favor, then we will pass it, and if not, we go back to the original item. And what I'm hearing from Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Sawant is there will be another bite at the apple on Monday.
And so if you, well, let's, we'll take up the motion on the substitution, and then we can talk about options for
Okay. Councilmember O'Brien.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
If, if we're at the point where you both agree on what that language is, would it be better for us to amend on the fly today or to do the language and come back?
Yes, we can
For not to write proviso language on the fly.
Can we, can we just
You're in trouble now.
Let's draw the question.
Essentially, you, if, if the motion to substitute fails, the original item is before you. You could hold the item for consideration on Monday, you could act on the item, and if you come to an agreement and want to bring it back, it would be a action to rescind you come to an agreement and want to bring it back, it would be a action to rescind CBA Home 3B3 and adopt indifferent.
So holding, holding the item means no votes, not on the substitute, not on anything?
Right. The, the sort of trade-offs here are if you vote on the underlying one, you are, you know, the $1.2 million is in the package with the provisos as presented in the revised balancing package. And then you could still try to rescind and act on a revised version of that on Monday. But if there isn't agreement, if you don't come to, you know, if you decide not to take that action and you hold the item and you, you forget to bring it back on Monday, that $1.2 million wouldn't be in the budget. So either, either way.
I don't, I don't think we will forget.
Yeah, I don't think we'll forget, but like, there is, you know, on behalf of central staff, we love to tie things up today as much as possible. However, we will work with you to do either. Either you can hold it and bring it back on Monday or you can act on it and if there is a revised version, we would rescind that item and then.
So is it easier, just so I understand, and I'm trying to be easier on my buddies and central staff, is it easier for us now to vote on the substitute motion? And then if it, if it fails, then we're back to the original and we can work with you on the original before Monday? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Calling for the vote, I think, is your, your choice and the sponsor's choice, but I would say voting on the motion to substitute would be cleaner and then you would know that there is not support to substitute the version before you now for the original version.
That's the yes that I need to hear. So are there any further comments? Because what I'd like to do is go ahead and move on the substitute and see if I've got the numbers right here, long last. So we are substituting HOM 903 B1 for HOM 3B3?
Correct.
Okay. So those in favor of the motion to substitute, HOM 903 B1 for HOM 3B3, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Wait, we're voting, we're voting to approve this?
Yeah, this is to, to approve the substitute. Are you clear here, councilmember Herbold? Okay. All right. So it looks, and those who are opposed to the substitute, raise your hand and vote no. No?
No.
Okay. So the substitute fails, the original is back in front of us. And shall we leave this at a pause for the original, given councilmember?
No. I think I should vote on this. For the, we vote on this, because then the funding itself will be in place. And I'm of, of course, going to vote yes on this because I want the funding. But then between now and Monday, we can see if we can have a revised language for the proviso.
Okay. So the, that motion fails, but the original is still in front of us. So we have the CBA HOM 903 B, HOM 3B3 in front of us now. And those in favor of the committee recommending approval of this, HOM 3B3, raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
It doesn't have to be moved and seconded again, right?
It was already moved and seconded. Correct.
Good. So this motion passes and it's approved and it is in the consent package. Okay. Very good. Thank you for that. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. And now we're adopting HSD 100A1.
Correct. And this. HSD 100A1 would adopt resolution 319619, law enforcement assisted diversion.
Very good. This actually is mine. So I will move approval of CBA 100, HSD 100A1.
I'll second that.
Okay. No, no comments here. I'm going to move directly to the substitute, which is HSD 969A1.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So it's moved and seconded for this. Do you want to describe it, Ally, before we move to, to vote on it?
Sure. This is a change to the resolution to name the Ballmer Group as the private organization that is donating to support the lead program.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Those in favor of the motion to substitute, and we've got the numbers, substituting 969A1 for HSD 100A1, raise your hand, vote aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. So now that motion passes, it is in front of us. All I am saying is that council, councilmembers who have been working on this for a long time, Lisa Dugard has reached out to a number of private entities. The Ballmer Foundation has offered a $1.5 million grant that will be added to the $3.5 million that we have included in our consent package. And I'm very pleased about that. Initially, the Ballmer Group was not prepared to put their name forward, they are now. So that, that is what we're doing. So are there any further comments or questions on this one? So I'm going to now ask us to vote on the substitute, which is HSD 969A1. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. None opposed? So this motion passes and this item will be approved. Very good. Thank you. We only have a couple left. Impressively enough, everybody.
So the next item removed from the consent package was SDOT 12C1. This would add $1.8 million of general fund and establish a CIP project for SDOT to implement redesign of Thomas Street.
Very good. And I think councilmember Gonzalez, you and I have, or your staff and I have worked on this, and would you like to, after I move approval of the CBA SDOT 12C1, as included in the consent package? And I'll take a second.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So there will be a motion and second to substitute and that's councilmember Gonzalez.
Did you just move and second it?
Just putting it in front of us.
Okay.
That's all. So you would, councilmember Gonzalez?
We need a motion from councilmember Gonzalez.
Oh, I still need to move?
The substitution. Original item has been moved and seconded. The motion to substitute.
Oh, got it. Sorry, I wasn't tracking.
No, there's, there's so much going on here.
I moved to substitute CBA SDOT-912-A-1 for CBA SDOT-12-C-1.
Well done. And I'll second.
Okay. So the substitute version of this bill takes what was originally proposed as a $1.8 million ad to support the redesign of Thomas Street and reduces that amount to $1.76 million and adds $40,000 to HSD for the Home for Good pilot and places a proviso on that $40,000. So there was $700,000 already included in the, in the consent package for this program. So this would, this action would increase the funding for Home for Good to $740,000.
Very good. So if you'll bear with me, the next item here is those in favor of this motion to substitute SDOT 9112A1, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed? Okay. So that passes, it's now in front of us. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have any other comments?
No, I thought it was done, but.
No, we still have.
I just wanted to be over. I was like, didn't we just move it?
We still have four more steps.
Four more steps? Goodness gracious.
So you have one more for this. You, you can discuss it. So the motion to substitute passed, now you can discuss it further and then.
Okay, got it. Nevermind, all right. Okay. No, I've talked about this a few times, really appreciate, just want to publicly appreciate Chair Bagshaw's support for the program and for working with me and my office to take just a small little slice out of the SDOT capital project dedicated to Thomas Street, which I also support, to help fully fund the Home for Good pilot project. I think it's a really good use of taxpayer dollars and again, my understanding is that this will have no impact on the goals around the Thomas Street capital projects. Really appreciate the, the creative budgeting that we were able to do here to, to accomplish both goals. Thank you.
Well done. Any other comments? Okay. Those in favor of the committee recommending approval of this item and the CBA number SDOT 912A1, raise your hand one more time. Say aye.
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 Say ah.
Ah.
None opposed? Very good. This motion passes and this item is approved. Very good. All right. Last one, everybody.
The final item removed from the consent package is SPD 8B1. This would add $127,000 general fund in 2020 ongoing to SPD for a regional domestic violence firearm enforcement detective and impose a proviso.
Very good. So I'm going to move approval of SPD 8-B-1 as included in the consent package. Do I have a second? Thank you. And I'm just going to ask councilmember Gonzalez if you have a motion to substitute.
I do. I moved to substitute CBA LAW 900-A-1 for CBA SPD 8-B-1.
Okay. So it's moved and seconded as presented and council central staff, would you like to describe it for us?
Sure. So the substitute version would add, rather than adding $127,000 to SPD for a regional domestic violence firearm enforcement detective, it would add $117,000 to LAW for a regional domestic violence firearm enforcement assessment specialist and add $10,000 to HSD for, to make the total add for the Home for Good program, $750,000.
Very good. So now we just have to get in front of us, those in favor of the motion to substitute, vote aye and raise your hand.
Councilmember Bagshaw, if you could have some discussion on the motion to substitute prior to calling for the vote, if people would like.
All right. You can do that now or I was going to give them as soon as we had it in front of us, but go ahead.
We could kill the other one if we did vote it first, so let's let this go.
Who's speaking?
This one's mine. So nothing more to add than what Ally added around the, what the, this actually does. This is just an opportunity for us to shift the dollars towards the law department, which is taking a huge lead in implementation here. So we had lots of conversations with the Seattle Police Department who indicated to us some hesitation around having a dedicated detective position in this role. So we've decided to shift, reprioritize our own priorities in my office and propose that we reduce the $127,000 that was originally proposed for SPD's budget to shift 117 of that over to the LAW and the remainder to the Home for Good program to bring the total funded amount for the Home for Good rental subsidy pilot program to a total of $750,000.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any further comments? All right. Now I still want to get some clarification from you. So we still need to get it in front of us or can, so it is, so.
We need to vote to substitute.
Yes. The next step is to vote on the substitute.
Right.
Ask councilmember Gonzalez.
Okay. Well, I was confused because I thought we.
So you made the motion to substitute and seconded. You discussed the, the substitute. So now you're voting on the motion to substitute and following that, if there's no further discussion, you.
All right. Everybody wants to do this. So those in favor of the motion to substitute, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? So that passes. Are there any further comments? All right. So those in favor of the committee recommending approval of item number 900A1, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
And any, any opposition? So the motion passes and this is now approved. Thank you very much. That was our last item of business, everybody. Do we have anything else that you would like to include? I want to recognize that we have gotten through all of this at 1:02 this afternoon. Last year, at this time, I think we took until about 9:30. So well done. Is there anything else, any other items of business? Anything, any other comments? This meeting's adjourned. Well done.
I don't remember that.